Good afternoon, everyone. We are now starting. It's called to order of the June 22 meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. We'll move to item B, motion to adopt the agenda. I think everyone should have the agenda in front of them. We need a motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, motion is properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. Go to item number C, approval of the June 8, 2017 minutes. I think everyone should have the minutes already in front of them. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So we will move to item number D, recognition of council members. I think we have seen two council members. So Councilman Kendall and Council Lady Van Rees. Would you, I guess Councilman Kendall, since you're already in the front, would you like to speak now your item or wait until your item is heard?
Thank you very much and good evening. I'm here on the Sky Nashville, I don't know the number, but this is item two. I'm here on item two, the Sky Nashville project. We've had several meetings in the community. It first started out, there was, in my opinion, a totally different plan that exists now. We've had several meetings on this project. It's been somewhat contentious. But the areas that I have heard people talk about are traffic, possibly parking, environmental issues, stormwater drainage, some people consider it too much density. And of course, my big one is one about affordability. And I have been promised by the developer that they will have eight to 10 units in this project that will be affordable housing. I don't know, I'm a little confused now, as probably most of us are, about what that really means in terms of dollars, but I think, from what I'm hearing, that would be the case. I met with planning staff yesterday for about an hour and a half to go over these various concerns and items that I have mentioned. And I believe they've done a pretty good job of explaining that to me. I hope they have to you as well, and I'm sure they will here tonight when they make their presentation to you. As it stands right now, from the improvements that have been made in this project, I think we're at a point where we need to move forward. Obviously, there will be hearings again, maybe at the council chambers, if you approve the project, if you recommend approval of the project. But at this point, I think we need to move forward with it. There have been a lot of concessions made. There may be some more that will be made in the future, I don't know. I think we will continue to talk with the residents of the area. I'm not saying that the issues that they raised, I think they raised issues that would concern anybody, but from my perspective at this point, I'm pretty satisfied that most of those issues have been resolved. The planning staff, of course, has told me that they are recommending approval of the project, and they're the experts. I'm not an expert, I just have to listen to people's concerns. And if those concerns have been resolved, then I favor the project. Thank you. I'm gonna have to leave, I've got a meeting down at the council chambers on action on this affordable housing issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lady Van Rees, would you like to speak now or wait until your item is heard?
Thank you very much and happy summer. Happy post-budget. I am here to speak on behalf of item number 046-001, the Bechal Village SP. As we know, in our community, we call this Phase Two. You may remember Phase One went through very well. And at the community meetings during Phase One, we knew that there was an anticipation of an additional project, and so we talked about it then. We had another community meeting once this was in place, and there continues to be public support for homeownership on this area. I will note, one bit of slight housekeeping because of the name change on the road. It says that this is at 704, 08, and 10 Dewest Avenue North. This is now known as West Dewest Avenue officially. That change in name was a matter of Public Works trying to sort things out for USD, and so that the trash gets picked up in the right places. So I just wanted to make a little housekeeping note in regard to this actual location. As of now, that name of the road does not exist. So with that, on behalf of the community, I appreciate the opportunity to keep this on consent, and we look forward to new neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to item E, items for deferral or withdrawal. Bob?
Yes, there are several items for deferral and withdrawal, starting with item number three. This is case 2017 SP-005-001. This is the livery at Fifth and Monroe SP, and the staff recommendation is to defer to the July 13 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 7A, case 2017 SP-043-001. This is the Highway 70 SP to change from RM 20 to SP zoning on various properties along Highway 70 South. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27 Planning Commission meeting. The associated case is 7B, case 2017 SP-044-001. This is the Sawyer Brown Road SP. This is a request to rezone from ON to SP for various properties along Highway 70 South as well. The request is to, the staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27 Planning Commission meeting. And the third associated case is item 7C, case 94P-025-003. This is a PUD cancellation of an existing planned unit development at the same locations along Highway 70 South as 7A and 7B. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27 Planning Commission meeting. The next item is item number nine, case 2017 S-082-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 227 Marcia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 13 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 12A, case 68-85P-001. This is a request to cancel a planned unit development district located at 2516 Buena Vista Pike and West Trinity Lane. At West Trinity Lane, staff recommendation is to withdraw. The associated case is 12B, case 2017 SP-047-001. This is the Buena Vista Downs SP. A request to rezone from R8 to SP zoning at 2516 Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. And the last item on the deferral and withdrawal list is item 16, case 2017 SP-058-001. This is a request to rezone from R10 and R15 to SP zoning for property at 1811 Kimbark Drive, and staff recommendation is to defer to the July 13 Planning Commission meeting. And I will note on that item that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Those are all the items on deferral.
Okay, so let's review that, just to make sure that we all have them. So item three, item 7A, 7B, 7C, nine, 12A, 12B, and 16, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So commissioners, we've all heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Need a motion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, those items have been deferred or withdrawn. So we will move now to item F, the consent agenda.
And before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item number one, case 2017 S-001R-001. This is a request to amend the subdivision regulations of Nashville and Davidson County adopted on March 9, 2006, and last amended on April 28, 2016. And the staff recommendation is to approve the regulations, effective dates, and revisions to previously approved subdivisions. Next item is item four, case 2017 SP-030-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to SP zoning for properties located at 528, 532, 536, and 540 Edwin Street to permit 32 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item six, case 2017 SP-041-001. This is a request to rezone from RM 9 and RM 20 to SP zoning for various properties along Rural Hill Road to permit up to 72 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item on the consent agenda is item 10, case 2017 S-111-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots and to remove the reserve parcel status on property located at 522 Radner Street. Staff recommendation is to remove the reserve status and approve with conditions. Next item is item 11, case 10379P-005. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of a planned unit development overlay district on property located at 1432 Robinson Road to permit an addition to an existing car wash facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 13, case 2016Z-120PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to R6 zoning on property located at 900 Oneida Avenue. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted, but to approve R6A zoning. The next case on the consent is item 14, case 2017Z-014TX-001. This is a request for an amendment of Section 17.20.140 of the Metro Zoning Code pertaining to traffic impact studies, and the staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 15, case 2017 SP-046-001. This is a request to rezone from SP and RS10 zoning to a new SP zoning district for properties located at 704, 708, and 710 West Dewest Avenue to permit 28 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 17, case 2017 SP-059-001. This is 3920 Stewart's Lane SP. This is a request to rezone from ART 2A to SP zoning at 3920 Stewart's Lane. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted, but to approve a second substitute ordinance with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 17. Next item is item 18, case 94-71P-008. This is a request to revise a portion of the preliminary plan for a PUD overlay district on property at 8117 Sawyer Brown Road. This is the Bellevue Mall property, to permit assisted living care, independent living, hotel, and a recreation center use. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 19, case 154-79P-002. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a planned unit development district at 24 White Bridge Pike to permit a building permit, or to permit a building expansion. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, and I will note on item 19 that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. And item 21, case 2017Z-067PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R6 and RM 9 to RM 15 zoning on property located at Witsen Street and 400 Adamwood Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 21. Next item is item 22, a contract renewals for Jennifer Higgs, David Klein, and John Broome, and recommendation is to approve. And item 23 is contract for Patrick Napier. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 27 is to accept the director's report and approve all administrative items.
Bob, I also need to recuse myself on item 19.
Do you want me to read back through those items on consent?
Well, let's review. So we have item one, item four, item six, item 10, item 11, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, and 27. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, commissioners, we have heard the items that are on the consent agenda. Need a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Okay, so we will be hearing tonight items 2, 5, 8, and 20. If you are not here for any of those items, 2, 5, 8, and 20, your item has been disposed All right, let's go.
All right, item number two on this evening's agenda is a request for specific plan to permit a residential development on properties located along 33rd Avenue North, 35th Avenue North, Delaware Avenue, and Trevor Street. This is just north of Charlotte Pike, and we're at the southwest corner of the interchange between I-40 and I-440. Staff's recommendation is to reopen the public hearing and approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Some background for the Planning Commission, this plan was originally filed in 2016. At that time, it included 141 units, as well as a proposed plan amendment to apply a special policy that would have permitted up to seven stories in height on the site. The Planning Commission held and closed a public hearing on that version of the plan on July 14 of 2016. Since that time, there has been a revised plan submitted, which has reduced the number of units. There's also been a reduction in the height, so that the plan amendment that was previously proposed is no longer required. Given the changes in the plan since last July, staff is recommending that the public hearing be reopened, and updated public notices were sent on the revised plan. The existing zoning on these properties is R6, which is intended for one and two family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The policy for the site is conservation and T4 neighborhood evolving. T4 neighborhood evolving is intended to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods with more housing choice and improved connectivity. This plan incorporates several housing types, and as condition, will improve existing infrastructure in the area. The conservation policy on the site recognizes slopes greater than 20%. And this site is located adjacent to a center and a high-capacity transit corridor, as identified in Nashville Next. And those are shown on the corridors and centers map in the Nashville Next Plan, specifically the West Nashville Community Plan. So this is a larger view of the plan, and this is the West Nashville area. And then the project site falls in this region here. So the blue would be Charlotte Pike, and that's an immediate need, high priority transit corridor. And the orange is a Tier One center in the plan, which are areas that are designated to have the most sort of investment and attention for growth within the county. When we have conservation areas, sensitive environmental features, in locations that are adjacent to corridors or to Tier One centers, the policy gives us specific guidance for how the sensitive environmental features should be balanced against development and the development pattern for these growth areas. And the guidance in the policy is that the scale should tip more towards the development pattern and the future function of those growth areas than towards protection of the environmental features in this specific location. This is the overall site plan for the project. A little bit of orientation, Charlotte Avenue would be to the south off the bottom of the screen. This street here is Trevor Street. This one to the north of the site is Delaware Avenue, and this is the interstate curving around. And then this would be 35th Avenue North. There are a number of different housing types proposed in this plan. There are 48 duplex units, those are highlighted in red, and those are along the perimeter of the site on 35th and on Trevor, as well as in the interior. There are also six townhomes, those are the units you see highlighted in green, and those are in the kind of northeast corner. There are 62 stacked flats, those would be one- and two-bedroom units, and those are located in two buildings at the center of the site around this amenity, the swimming pool area. And then there are seven detached one-family units located along the Interstate 440 side of the project. The height would be three stories and 40 feet for duplexes, townhomes, and one-family, and four stories and 45 feet for the stacked flat buildings. Vehicular access to the site is through three places, two to Delaware Avenue on the north side, one to Trevor Street on the south, with connections to Charlotte via 35th Avenue North. There is both tuck-under parking in these units, as well as structured parking below the stacked flat buildings, and then some limited surface parking within the site, as well as on-street parking provided along Trevor Street and 35th Avenue North. There will be sidewalks installed along the property frontage on Trevor and 35th, and those are highlighted in yellow. Staff has also conditioned for a number of improvements to enhance the existing pedestrian and vehicular infrastructure in this area to improve connectivity to Charlotte. There's a lot of information on this graphic, so I'm gonna walk through it kind of one piece at a time. This slide shows improvements both that were proposed on the plan by the applicant, as well as those that would be required under the conditions that staff is recommending. So starting at the top of the site, Delaware Avenue would be widened to 20 feet of pavement, and it would be extended past the second driveway entrance to the site to allow for emergency vehicle turnaround. There would be improvements along 35th Avenue, along the property frontage, which is this pink line, and that would be the addition, that sheet would be widened to allow for eight feet of pavement for the on-street parking, as well as the sidewalk. And then there would also be improvements along Trevor Street, which is the purple line here, to add eight feet of pavement for the on-street parking and the sidewalk. Existing 35th Avenue between Delaware and Charlotte Pike, which is here, kind of has two different characters. The portion that's highlighted in orange is currently very narrow, and there's some challenging topography on either side of it. So staff has conditioned that that portion, from Delaware down to this alley, which is located between Trevor and Felicia Streets, be widened to a minimum width of 20 feet of pavement, and that's to allow two cars to pass going in opposite directions safely. And then a condition requiring that the blue portion of 35th connecting down to Charlotte be widened to a Public Works standard 252. That standard would accommodate a sidewalk and curb and gutter on one side without removing the possibility of intermittent on-street parking. There is a pattern of some residents in this area using the streets for parking now, so this would preserve that opportunity with that section. Those improvements would be finalized with the engineering details that are provided at final. If the minimums that are established in the conditions cannot be met due to topography or right-of-way impacts to the existing development, the applicant would need to coordinate with planning staff and Public Works to examine alternatives, and then those would come back to this body for review and a decision. So planning and Public Works staff would make a recommendation to the Planning Commission about anything less than the conditions as stated. And then on 33rd Avenue, because Charlotte is a high priority transit corridor, and because the existing pavement on 33rd is a little wider, a little more consistent, staff is recommending the installation of a sidewalk. And that would be the pedestrian connection from this portion of the site down to the street to help connect folks living here to the transit service on Charlotte. Additionally, there would be improvements to the intersection of 35th and Charlotte. An eastbound turn lane from Charlotte to 35th would be installed, that's a condition that came out of the traffic impact study, as well as striping 35th to allow for two exiting lanes for folks to turn left or right onto Charlotte, and one entering lane to go up 35th towards the development. These are some section views that were provided by the applicant to help illustrate the height of the buildings and the relationship of the different unit types to each other across the site. So this is a section view looking south, as if you were standing on Delaware Avenue. So you've got the interstate to your left, and then 35th Avenue here, so you can see that the site slopes down and the buildings have been terraced in to work with the grain. This is looking north, as if you were standing on Trevor Street. So this would be 35th on the west side, and then kind of moving up to the interstate here. This would be if you were looking west within the site, so kind of standing on the site itself, looking out towards 35th. This would be the Trevor Street frontage, and this would be Delaware Avenue or the interstate on the right. This was a rendering provided by the applicant of the view of the kind of exterior of the site along Trevor Street. So these would be those duplex units that are shown on the Trevor Street frontage. This project does support several critical planning goals. Its location near a high priority corridor for transit and near a Tier One center allows us to be an appropriate site for infill. This creates walkable neighborhoods by placing residents in close proximity to that high priority transit corridor, and incorporates multiple types of housing, contributing to the policy goals for diversity of housing in this area. And it does support a variety of transportation choices for folks to travel down to Charlotte and make use of the transit that is there. So given the location of the site adjacent to a center and a priority corridor, this is an appropriate location for additional residential, and therefore, staff recommends that the public hearing be reopened, and approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and reopen the public hearing, and we will give the applicant a chance to come up. So you have 10 minutes, and if you would like to save two for rebuttal, you may.
We will do that. Thank you, Chair Person, and...
Thank you, Chair Person and members of the Commission. Also want to thank Councilmember Kendall for his input and his support, and Councilmember Murphy and the community for their input as well. And I want to thank Sean for her excellent presentation. She really did a great job. As mentioned, we were charged by this commission to come back with a plan that stayed within the policy. Distance and location were not as much of a concern when this was discussed before, but height was, was a major concern. So this plan that we've come back with provides a mixture of housing, which is a critical goal for the T four urban neighborhood evolving policy. The plan has duplexes, single-family homes, townhouses, multifamily, none of which exceed 45 feet in height, which is something that you were concerned about before. The plan, however, does much more. This plan is designed in a manner so that it frames the current street with the housing that's similar to the housing on the other side of Trevor. So if you're going up Trevor, it's going to be very contiguous, looking from one side to the next. The interior has the multifamily, which is totally hidden from view within the neighborhood side. However, on the interstate side or the Nashville side, you'll have clear views of downtown, and from downtown you'll have clear views as well. And this, it's really a landmark, this corner is, where the interstate is, where it comes together. It's a highly visible piece of property. And so we think that this structure will be very iconic in nature, and, and everybody will enjoy it. Unlike the prior plan, this plan provides for affordability. You heard Councilmember Kendall, he has, he wants that, and we're going to provide that as well. So we'll have affordability. And all of these changes, I think, have resulted in the staff's recommendation of approval. It's very important to note that we did have many meetings, and we've talked to a lot of people in the community, and the one common concern, even when I looked over the internet at the, at the comments that came in from the community, the number one concern is lack of infrastructure. This area has developed one R six lot at a time with very large houses, duplexes, no sidewalks, driveways on the public streets, no street improvements, no walkability, no storm drainage. In essence, the problems that they're incurring are almost self-imposed. It's not their fault, but it's just the way that our system works today. I know Councilmember Angie Henderson is changing that, so when people develop these individual lots, they'll have to do improvements, but up until now, that's not been the case. And so the development of Sky Nashville is really going to address a lot of these community concerns. 35th and Trevor will be widened. There'll be on-street parking where it doesn't exist today. There'll be sidewalks with grass strips. There'll be no driveway cuts into this development. All the houses will have internal access, no driveways crossing the sidewalks. 35th will be widened all the way to Charlotte. Sidewalks will be added on 33rd Avenue, and turning lanes will be added to Charlotte. And those are all things that we're, we're not asked to do by traffic study, some of them we were, but we really feel like it's incumbent on us to do something to the community, and based upon the community concerns, we really need to do that. And so that's, that's really what we're doing. We're trying to make this more walkable. Part of the, the T four neighborhood evolving policy is to provide a high level of walkability. And as, as staff had mentioned, this is at a very key intersection. You can walk from here to downtown in 25 minutes. You can get on a bicycle and go downtown in 15 minutes, or you can simply walk down and catch transit. Right now, people in the community don't enjoy the opportunity to get on a sidewalk, but once the Sky Nashville project is developed, they'll have that opportunity. So not only will traffic be diminished from our site, traffic will also be diminished within the neighborhood itself, and everybody will be encouraged to live in a more walkable area and a more accessible area. So with all these improvements, you know, that's why I think Sky Nashville is being recommended today, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Members of the Commission, my name is Tom White, 315 Dedrick Street, also represent the applicant. At the front end, would comment about some things that you've heard in the staff report, but I would emphasize, and that is, it's come a long way from where this plan started, at originally 141 units to 123. There were significant policy issues which are no longer a factor here, which have been addressed due to the decrease in height. If you look at the critical planning goals that are spelled out in the staff report, it is so evident as to what has been accomplished here. It's consistent with Nashville Next. Obviously, housing choices are there and available. The transportation choices are self-evident with the proximity to the primary corridor there on Charlotte, and it's clearly an undeveloped urban area. When this matter was heard previously, the commission had addressed a number of these things, and I think it's been clear that the applicant has really worked diligently with the staff. We always thank and will the Councilman Ed Kendall and Council Lady Kathleen Murphy, but the staff's put in a tremendous amount of time, and a number of these changes, as suggested, came from the staff, some of the applicants, some of the staff, but they've all been agreed to. As you heard Councilman Kendall say, he recommends approval and says basically, take it to the next level, and that's where we need to go. It's a legislative matter, in my opinion, at this point. Urged you to approve it today and move forward, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, members of the Commission. My name is Michael Gergen. I'm a civil engineer with Dale &amp; Associates. I think Tom and Roy covered everything pretty much. I just wanted to point out, if you go back and you look at the slides of the cross-section of the site, the sensitivity that this design has honored with the topography to work with the, work with the land, work with the slopes, as opposed to work against them. Not a single one of these units will be a flat slab. They all will be split level. They, all their foundations will work with the topography. And that was done specifically through meetings with the community and not, I mean, this, they call this the hill. It's a hill. And we feel like that this project works very well with the hill. It works with the, the hill as it, it's always existed, and much better than just a, a bunch of R six duplexes thrown up by somebody who just wants to blow and go. We're, we're trying to do this in the right way. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We heard from the applicant, and they have saved two minutes for rebuttal. If there's anyone else in the audience in favor of this item, we'd ask for you to line So you have two minutes each. We'd ask that, try not to repeat comments that have been made by one of your predecessors. And when you come up, please give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Campos, 804 Aaron Lane, Nashville, Tennessee, 37221. I am a pharmacy student at Lipscomb University. I've also have worked as a lead technician at the CVS at the Bellmaid's Store to support myself in the past six years. Now working in the same CVS as a pharmacy intern since I'm in pharmacy school. You will see my smiling face for when you come to pick up your medicine at the pharmacy. I have lived to, I have, have had to live out, out past Bellevue in a small apartment with a very long time-consuming drive to school and work every day. I can't afford decent affordable housing anywhere near the area where I, where I work and attend the university. When I graduate as a doctor of pharmacy from Lipscomb University in two years, I will be your pharmacist, filling your prescriptions in your neighborhood. I will be a part of keeping this community healthy, but with my student loans for years to come, I would still not be able to afford housing anywhere near my work or community that I serve. I feel like I should be able to afford to live in the community where I work and go to school, and I'm a part of this community and serve my community every day. I should be able to live here and enjoy this community too. I would love to have brand-new, clean, affordable housing in this area that I live and serve every day. My colleagues and fellow students have the same needs and desire for affordable housing. Please bring affordable housing to this area, and please vote yes to this development and all other developments that bring progress in affordable housing to this generation of young professionals and the workforce that keeps Nashville growing and going. Thank you.
We'd ask that you hold your applause so that we can keep this meeting going in an orderly manner. All right.
Hi, I'm Brendan Maitre, I live at 3937 Lower Road. I grew up in Nashville all my life, been seeing a lot of changes the last five years. And next five years, I see a lot of people getting pushed out of their neighborhood because of how much money they get. I just think we need to keep affordable housing affordable in our neighborhood that people grew up in. You know, we work, let's not make this an issue of black and white, but not making it an issue of how much money we have to be able to enjoy Nashville. Thank you.
Okay, a really minute. Let's not do the applause after every person. We have a long meeting tonight if we do that. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Dana Zarb, and I've recently relocated to the Nashville area, and I currently live at 2323 Springdale Avenue, Nashville, 37215. My husband and I have been searching the area for a community. We want low maintenance, and we've been looking for views, and I've scoured the area. And there's some beautiful housing at South Side at the Gulch, but there's so many stairs there, and we're trying to get something that's more main-level living. My husband works downtown on Hay Street, and we were just really excited to hear about this community. We heard about it on the news. And to get a community feeling is hard to find out there in this main-level living that has the pool and the different types of homes there. So we're just really excited about it and support the project, and hope everyone votes for it. Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is LaJonda Scales. I'm an employee at Bridgestone Arena, home of the Nashville Predators. And I'm pretty sure you all know how bad the traffic is in that area. I live at 2027 Ed Temple Boulevard right now, and traveling from there, transiting from there to downtown is pretty difficult. I figure if I could move in the area in a nice view, close transit to downtown, make cuts times, you know, getting there to work. But I think affordable housing on 35th Avenue would be great. So I think the bill should be passed. Thank you.
My name is Pat Gibson, and I live at 3023 Twisted Oak in Murfreesboro. And my husband and I have been looking for something in Nashville that's affordable with a community like this. So I hope you'll pass this. I vote yes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Deutschman. I live at 2400 Sunset Place. I think that we need to build this kind of housing, mixed income housing really, on or near the corridors where people can walk and catch public transportation. That's what Nashville Next recommends. I think that's what citizens want, and I think we have to, as the mayor says, sort of be YIMBYs, not NIMBYs. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Ritchie. I just moved here, and I live 2606 Eighth Avenue South, which is actually pretty close to the city. I'm currently pursuing my master's in biomolecular science at Lipscomb, and I work part-time at Centennial Hospital. So I'm kind of right in between where I want to be, but I'm, I'm really paying way too much, I believe, at this point. Not that this is really about that, but I do want to build a future here, and I want to be in Nashville. I've fallen in love with it, and I, I could see myself after getting my master's degree and working at Centennial. That's really close to the hospital and where I want to be, and I think it'd be really good to have some young professionals in that area and build that neighborhood.
Hey there, my name's Ashley Smith. I'm a real estate agent and a property manager. I relocate people all the time from everywhere. So I actually recently, I live on the west side. I just recently purchased a home myself. So not only am I relocating people and searching for other people, but also, you know, as a 32-year-old young professional wanting to purchase their own home, it's costly. I had to purchase a little bit further west than I wanted to. What I like about this community is the walkability, as well as the sense of community and all the different options without having to be as far west as it seems that you have to be now. Thank you.
Can you give us your address, please? I'm sorry. 117 Bricksworth Lane, number 937205. Thank you. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Roach. I currently just moved here from Knoxville, Tennessee. I currently live in 5,000 Mountain Springs Drive. One of the most painstaking processes for me was looking for something that was close to Nashville and affordable. I think that the convenience to downtown and affordability is really good with these, and I think it's really good for the future of Nashville, especially with all the expansion and everything that's going on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Jackson, and I'm on the operator of Just the Way You Like it Mobile Detail. This area has been my area for almost 10 years now. I've been, I'm originally from Chicago, Illinois, and I always try to do everything affordable for the people, and even if the people can't pay for it, a lot of times I'll do it just to help the people. So this, this project here, I think this building up in, in that area is going to be really great for me, I know for one, and everybody else. A lot of traffic up and down the road is really, and that area's never really been construction done. In my 10 years of, of being here, it's never been really too much. It's been small condos and stuff like that put up, but nothing that we can afford. So we're just really hoping and praying for this thing. We ask that y'all support us too. Thank you.
My name is William Bargalotti. I live at 3304 Felicia Street, so it's one street off of where this development would be. Very excited to, when I moved here two years ago, I was very excited to live in an urban environment that was walkable. I've been disappointed in some of the infrastructure, so the, the streets are, are not great. There's no sidewalks. I was very excited to see this plan. Currently, the, the property is undeveloped. I would like to see it developed. I would like to be in a more densely populated area to help development on Long Charlotte. And I appreciate the, the offer to improve the infrastructure with, with sidewalks. Very excited about that, and I would ask that you approve this.
My name is Spencer Hiles. I was born at Baptist Hospital of Nashville 38 years ago, live and work here ever since. I've been a licensed mortgage banker in seven different states. I know a little bit about affordable housing. I know people in San Francisco, IT programmers, make 150,000 a year and still can't afford a one-bedroom apartment. And so Nashville desperately needs affordable housing. That's one main reason we have so much traffic coming to Nashville. People have to move further away, and I think all the interstates are clogged too because of that, and people want to be closer but can't. All the jobs are in the city, but they can't afford to live here. So I urge you to definitely approve this, and I wish there was 20 more like him. Thank you.
We need your address, sir.
3351 Ackland Avenue. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Etta Ghul. I live at 2603 Pennington Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37216. I'm an ex barber slash cosmetologist. Just currently got custody of seven grandkids, have a mother that's aunt, that's disabled, that's in a nursing home, that I have been trying to get her home for four to five years now, but nothing is affordable. And maybe this may make it to the point where I may be the first person to apply for this site. I can't find no housing that is affordable to us. I am currently living in a two-bedroom home with seven grandkids. That's difficult. I'm hoping and praying that because they will have handicap accessible or flat level, that I may be the next tenant of this site. Thank you.
My name is Alessandra Osipova. I work for Clinique in Green Hills at the Macy's, and I've been living here for about nine years. I moved from San Francisco, really walkable place across from Golden Gate Park. As you know, there are not many sidewalks. I personally, I live at 2601 Hillsborough Pike at the Villager condominiums, and I've been wanting to move for like the past five years, but I can't because I can't find anything that will work with my wage. My boyfriend and I, we would like to get a place that would fit both of us, but he is studying Cookeville, and it's just really hard to make an hour and a half commute every day. So basically, I don't really have a prepared statement. I just wanted to say that I'm excited about Sky Nashville, and I hope, I wish the best for it, and I hope that other projects like this come into being. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Gerald Way. I stay at 2603 Pennington with Miss Ghul. Yes, we're a family with seven grandkids, and we're supportive of this, especially because on our street, on Pennington Streets, we don't have no sidewalks. And not just that, we're pushing everybody out on our street, buying the homes and putting up three or four houses. But the move of these new houses they're putting up, it costs outrageous money. Then for the people who else get government assistance help, they, it's not affordable for us to get in them. So I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I hope y'all can help, not just our family, but as everybody else as well.
Good evening. My name is David Buell. I live at 1025 Allen Street, on the other side of Columbus River. My thing is, I've been there for four years. I've paid $700 a rent a month as long as I've been there. Now, since these new houses been, they jacked my rent up to 1,100. They're slowly pushing me out. All my- All my, I was born and raised here in Nashville at General Hospital. I don't want to leave my home. I don't want to leave Nashville, but they're pushing me out. So we need this. Like, people that love Nashville with all their heart need this. Like, it's not we want this, we need this. I don't want to move to Cartridge, I don't want to move to Murfreesboro. I'm from Nashville, I want to be in Nashville, I want to stay in Nashville. Thank you.
We will close the public hearing for people who are in support of this item if the applause does not stop.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mike Jones, not the one out of Texas. I've been here, let me give you my address. 3207 Park Avenue, 37209, a couple of blocks down the street. I think Sky Nashville would be beautiful. I think a former house would be nice to go up there. I'm going through the program for the first time, I'm about. And I think that I would like to live up there. When I pass down the interstate, I look at the houses are beautiful. I like it. I want to be a part of it. So like Ms. Kendall said, I think this is a sure thing. I think y'all should think about it, pray about it, and get a good opinion. And one more thing I want to say that, it's emotional. I used to be here a long time. And like the young man just said, when they build a new house and the little house is on the side, they taxes go up. They can't afford it, so we see you later. And then they come inbound, and they put up two. So they pushing us all out, but I want to be a part of it. I like it, and I know y'all like it. Don't be scared, vote on it.
Good evening, Ted Pines, 3300 Nevada. I'm less than a mile from the site. I'm a Realtor at Village. I've sold many of the homes that are on that hill. I've named the hill Sylvan Summit, and I'm proud of it. And I take a lot of pride in what goes up there, although it's not in my control. I hope in sharing my voice, it helps influence that. I stood on the other side of this development in opposition for the last several meetings. And I've attended many meetings that went on with the developer, at some of the neighbors, both including the developer and not. A lot of considerations have been put into this. I do appreciate a lot of the adjustments and modifications that have been made to the plan to address some of the concerns of the neighbors. While it may not address all of those, and I'm sure we're here soon to hear those, I do believe in evaluation of the totality of the project and the benefit that it brings to the hill with the modifications and conditions that have been made, that it's a great project. Again, no project or development in a community is perfect. It provides, it creates implications for the neighbors, always. But I think in totality, this project is a great development for the neighborhood. And I have to look at it in total consideration of how does it impact the neighbors and the community as a whole? I think there are traffic considerations that need to be addressed and are as a part of this. And I know that there is some concern about the number of units. And while I do believe the alternatives to this is this could be sold to a developer, it would be parsed apart, and we would have a situation like we have developing in most of our neighborhoods of Nashville of a mixture of incongruent and inappropriate architecture. So I do believe having it developed by one person that's going to account for all those things will be of great benefit. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Chad Lindsay. I currently live at 44 Twin Street. Off of my property, I can actually see what's the Sky Nashville property area. I'm currently looking to buy a new house. And I'm, being a member of the workforce, I need something very affordable and convenient. And I would like you to take in consideration for all the people that are looking for affordable living. Thank you for your time.
All right, seems that we've heard from everyone who is in support of this item. If there is anyone in opposition of this item, we would ask that you would line up. Everyone will have two minutes each to speak. We'd ask that you not repeat what someone before you have said, and please give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Heather Carls. I live at 3224 Trevor Street. I love this neighborhood. And I think it was wonderful hearing from all of these great people about how they would love to have affordable housing. There were 15 people in this line that wanted affordable housing. The written proposal for this property only allows for six affordable housing units, which means the majority of the group that just spoke wouldn't be able to live there. I think if the issue is affordable housing, then it needs more. I also am concerned about the density of the area. I know it's been targeted in Nashville Next. I've submitted this to the planning commission. This is a rendering just to show the current development that's going on in that neighborhood. I gave a copy, hopefully you have it. All of the red and all of the yellow are current and proposed to be constructed properties. So it gives an idea of exactly how much development is already going on before increasing Sky Nashville. Sky Nashville, under its current zoning, is already allowed to build two units on every lot. With this SP zoning change, it would be permitted to do 4.25 units on every lot. Is it necessary to have this increase on the property? In addition to that, I'm concerned about the cliff. I submitted this drawing just so that you could actually see a picture of where the highway wraps around this property. It has a rock wall on that side. And putting a condominium complex in there with buried parking means that they'll have to actually blast and excavate into a piece of property that lines a highway that has 250,000 Nashville residents driving by every day. And within the past month, there was a construction accident that a dumpster overturned and fell off of that cliff onto that highway with all of those passengers. So I'm just concerned about the safety of this proposal. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Daniel Wilson. I reside at 419 B 36th Avenue. So that is a street that looks over onto the site. Right now, I see green vegetation trees and two houses that are boarded up. But I also don't hear the interstate noise because those trees act as a sound barrier. So I ask you to consider the other impacts of completely leveling all of the trees that are there to build this development. Also, heard a lot of the opposition comments and really became confused because I didn't hear anything about how, what percentage of the units would actually be affordable, what affordable means. And also challenge, as someone who recently moved into the area, what would that do to my property values? And what would that do to the investment I've made in the area? We've heard a lot about walkability. I actually walk my dog twice a day on those hills. And they're hills. And 33rd Avenue is a very tall hill. And Trevor Street is a very tall hill. So I really question how many people are going to be walking on the sidewalks down those hills. Today, nobody walks on the streets. And we haven't added 122 units in the area that you would have to walk through. So I would request that you actually go against staff recommendations and don't vote for this. Thank you.
I'm Shirley Stevens. I'm a resident of Sylvan Heights neighborhood, which is across Charlotte Avenue from the proposed Sky Nashville project. I am opposed to the Sky Nashville request to rezone from R6 to SP to allow building with nearly triple the density. That is currently allowed. The reasons for my opposition are as follows. Charlotte Avenue is the primary exit route from Sylvan Heights and Summit Hill. And there are four new apartment complexes in less than a mile which have been built along Charlotte Avenue. The first one is Station 40 at Sylvan Heights at 4001 Charlotte Avenue with 262 apartments, 14 to 16 townhomes. The next one is 2,700 Charlotte Avenue apartments with 156 apartments. The third is Charlotte at Midtown, formerly known as Aspire, at 2400 Charlotte with 210 apartments. Then the fourth one is West 46 Apartments at 4510 Charlotte Avenue with 171 apartments. You can see that this is a real strong concentration of apartment and condo living within a very short space of mileage, less than a mile. Although the total number of the apartments is 815 units, the number of cars is anywhere from 1,680 up to over 2,000 because many people have rented these apartments that are couples, but not even just couples. We're talking about people figure out how they can afford to live someplace so they double and triple. Thank you so much for your time.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Lily Lewin, and I live at 3306 A Trevor Street. So this is going to happen right across the street from me. I moved back to Nashville, grew up here. My parents still live here. My brother lives here, grew up here, moved back in the end of '14. Told my parents it would take me about three months to live, to find a house. Took me a year and a half. So I was here last year in front of you all, and some of you were here last year. And I was against it last year, and I'm against it again this year. I don't believe that it's affordable housing for many reasons, but I am pro-affordable housing, also pro-development. But I'm pro-development that's smart, that doesn't overtake everything else around it. I have taken the time to go and knock on doors all over Sylvan Summit and over, all the way to 36 and 37, from 33rd. And since I moved there a year and a half, and since last year when we met here before, over 50 units have been built already. So we're already ahead of where we were last year in terms of density. So this is going to make it more dense and even harder to get up and down. The hills that we walk are not walkable hills in terms of going to ride the bus to work or to ride, if you rode your bicycle, you'd be in really great shape. The hills are for getting in shape. That's what we do it for. We don't really walk to take the bus. You could, but that would take a lot of sweat equity. So I have gotten to know the people who are having to get out of their homes because they have been paying $600 a month in rent, and somebody is selling their home, and they're going to have to leave with two months' notice. It's going to be tough for them to find any place to live. I've talked to the people on the end of Trevor who've lived there for 13 and 14 years, who had to work, and so they couldn't come talk to you about how they don't want this to happen. Everybody but two of my neighbors are against this. People who actually live on the hill, not people that have been found to come here and talk to you today. And so I would like you to take into consideration the people who live there and that we vote no on SP. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Mindy Godfrey. I live at 765 McMurray Drive, E14. And I'm a Vanderbilt graduate student at the Divinity School. I used to live about a mile from the campus. But my condo was sold and upscaled, and it was out of my price range. So I now live all the way out in the first corners and try to fight the traffic to campus every day. I'm lucky, I have a car, I can do that. Not everybody can, and our transportation system simply isn't adequate. And while affordable housing would be fantastic in this neighborhood, in a neighborhood I would love to afford to live in, this project isn't realistically affordable housing. Affordable housing is going to require units to start for under 150,000. That's not what we're seeing. And if it is just the requirement that Nashville currently has as an ordinance, it's only five or six units of this entire development that are actually affordable. Nashville desperately needs affordable housing solutions for workers, for graduate students, for all kinds of people who want to move here and are moving here to live their dreams. But it's just not a possibility. And the continued economic impact of overpriced housing is going to end up being a detriment to the city of Nashville in the long run. Thank you for listening this afternoon.
Commissioners, my name is Brian Fondry. I'm a resident on Trevor Street, 3308 Unit A, directly across from the proposed development of Sky Nashville. So I'm very familiar with the area and the hill as it has been duly, I guess, addressed as the common name now. It's a great area of development. I've heard a couple of common themes as they've been proposed, both from the for side and the against side. One of those is affordability. I would join my opposition members in really needing a justification of how this housing is going to be affordable. Less than 10% of the proposed units, I think Mr. Kendall addressed eight to 10 units being proposed of the 123 units that have been planned for of being affordable. So those that have asked for affordable housing in Nashville, I think are asking the right question. And we're all in favor of development with affordability. This area of Nashville, this area of the hill, is very constrained and will not provide that affordability. As I think about iconic views of the city, I don't think affordability. And I would hard press our developer, the person asking to develop this, to prove out how that is going to be affordable for the members that have spoke in favor of his plans. The second thing that I've heard is walkability. Walkability is a great idea. This is not an area of walkability. And it will only propose more challenges to traffic. Not only at Charlotte, but as we continue to develop as a city, this will right, butt up right against the interstate that at some point is going to need to expand. And when you have a cliff and an interstate that needs expansion, I just don't see the space here on the hill. The third piece of development, which is a common trend, both on the proposed favorable side and in opposition side. I'm a favor of development. I moved from Germantown, where there was plenty of development, to the hill where there's plenty of development. And if he's worried about developing this in mixed areas, I would ask him to keep the zoning as it is and work with us as a community to make this a favorable development for all that is affordable, that is maintained, the presence of the community, not to go to special zoning where we know it won't be affordable, walkable, or the right cautious development. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Angela Coulter. I live at 3318 Trevor Street. I believe I'm the, as of recently, I'm the longest living resident on that street. Everyone has taken, excuse me, my talking points. But I want to leave this with everyone here. I've gone through two years of overdevelopment. I would have said it a different way, but I'm going to be quite respectful. It's, the traffic is not just a problem, it's a nightmare. I listened to those who were for it. I did hear about the 20 feet on the road on 35th that they were going to add. That is just not going to get it. From 35th and Trevor to Charlotte, it's about 100 to 115 feet. There is no way that the, I'd say quadruple the density with just one car per resident, that we're going to be able to navigate going down that hill, down this narrow, and it's going to bottleneck up. I think the young lady who was for it, it's just not going to work. I want affordable homes for everyone here, affordable housing for everyone. But it's at the point where I can't afford my own house. This is ridiculous. We have 50 houses on 35th already. All of my neighbors are gone. All of them are gone on 35th. I want, I love the neighbors on 33rd, I love them on Trevor, they're just wonderful. But this project, it's not benefiting the neighbors. I don't see how it's really benefiting the city with affordable housing. $300,000, young people, is not affordable housing. My home went from $115,000 to $268,000. I want to retire on Trevor. I want to continue to love my neighbors. But please stay within the confines of the current zoning. Please. Thank you.
Looks like I'm it. My name's Rob Lewin, I live at 3306 Trevor, I live right across the street of the development. We say that this is T4 evolving. We done evolved. We're all as evolved as we're going to get. The average price between 37 and 33rd is between $400,000 and $900,000. We didn't do this, that's what's been built. We would love to have something there that was affordable. The affordable is just to manipulate you. Is to say, oh, we're going to put in six units that's affordable, isn't that nice? And the rest of our units are going to be a million to a million and a half, two million and three quarters. Because you can't have those ones that overlook the city and not charge a ridiculous amount of money. Because you'd be stupid if you didn't. So to get you on board, they're going to try to sell six or eight or 10 units. I know Councilman Kendall is completely, completely sold on affordable housing, and I don't blame him. It's what he ran on, he should. But this is not that. The other thing is, this isn't a hill. This is a volcano. This is a volcano. This is really, really steep. The only reason you walked up down these streets is for cardio. That's the only reason. Ask anybody, we only do it for cardio. I don't care if you put a sidewalk in, I don't care if you put in a moving sidewalk, it isn't going to help. We moved there knowing it wasn't going to be walkable, it doesn't fix anything, we don't need to do that. But I want to bring your attention. Yesterday, the owner of the property walked on to my property, down my driveway, up my stairs, onto my front porch, and verbally accosted my wife and attacked her verbally. Used every cuss word you can use to attack a woman and to speak to her negatively in every possible way. It was disgusting. We called the police, the police were there. They weren't there, they don't know. We called the police. Do you mind if I finish? We called the police, we filled out the police report, the gentleman is sitting right over there, just threw up his hands. What my wife had done is she had put up some signs. We had gotten postponed from the 8th. She put up, the time changed?
Sir, I think, I think you used up your 10 seconds.
Do you mind if I finish the story?
I'm sorry, we have to keep it, we have to keep it to two minutes.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Weathers. I live at 35th Avenue North. And not that I'm against this proposal of new development, I just feel like all the traffic's going to be coming right down where I live, right on my street in front of my house. And it's already a traffic issue getting onto Charlotte, which I know they said they were going to redevelop that and have turning lanes and whatnot, but if you're guiding all the traffic to come down that one street, when you have 123 units and two to three cars per unit, that's going to be a lot of congestion on one street coming in and out of that area. So that's my biggest concern, is that it's already, people already fly down that street, even though, I mean, they are turning left or, you know, into wherever they're going, it's already a traffic hazard, and now it's going to be even more of a traffic hazard with the street already as narrow as it is. Even though they said they're going to widen it, they're obviously going to have to take people's properties to widen it to put sidewalks and also street parking, which the road is already narrow and there's only like one car that can go either way without pulling over. I mean, there's been numerous accidents that's happened on that street because people turn in and there's only one room, space for one car to go down the road without one car pulling over for the other car to pass. So I just ask that that be reevaluated and looked at as far as 36 being an option, 35th, whatever, and, you know, it be taken into consideration that that one street being just the main entrance and main exit is a traffic hazard. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, so applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, I hope we can get our planning hats back on. The current R6 zoning and developing these properties based upon the R6 zoning is not providing affordability, it's not providing any infrastructure, and it's not providing, you heard the price range of the houses that would be built. I do want to talk about density a minute. If you have an R6 lot, you put a duplex on it, that really equates to almost 15 units per acre. This site is not three times more dense than that. As a matter of fact, the houses that are being built adjacent to this are large duplexes with averaging three and four bedrooms. This development has 25 one bedrooms and 37 two bedrooms. And so from a bedroom, bedroom perspective, it's the same. This site is not a forested site, it has very few trees. The distance from this site to Charlotte is 700 feet, it's not a long haul, it's not a long walk. It's not, they're on public streets that you're walking on, a public street can't be built in excess of probably 13 or 14%. So it's very easily walkable. This is a great opportunity to build something in an area that planning, that you all know is sort of a tiered center. You've identified it as such, a Tier 1. It meets the goals of Nashville Next and the T4 Neighborhood Evolving. It's walkable. The critical goal is to provide walkability for neighborhoods with their wide range of housing choices that supports a variety of transportation. That's exactly what this does. And the plan supports infill in an area near a T1 center and a priority center. It's exactly what this does. So Councilman Kendall has spoken, he's asking for you to help him at the next level where he'll take it. He's asking for your endorsement of this. And I know probably the way it's written right now, it says six units. He's already agreed, or my clients already agreed, to do eight to 10 units of affordable units. I know we spent a lot of time talking about that, but the fact is that since you do have one bedroom, one bedroom and two bedrooms, there's probably going to be a lot more affordability than what's adjacent to it. Thank you so much.
So we will now close the public hearing and go around our commissioners to hear your thoughts. And so I guess if Council Lady Allen, you don't mind us starting on your side of the circle?
Thank you for that opportunity. I have a couple of questions. I would like to go back to the affordable question, since that's been a big one, if it's okay to bring the developer back up. If this were to come under the inclusionary zoning that officially begins this month, my understanding is, but I'm not sure what triggers whether you are, so I'm not sure that they necessarily do have to, but if they were to, my remembrance is that that was at least 10% would be required, which would be at least 12 homes. And we, as an early speaker said, there were, I counted 17 people that said they wanted to live here. So is it possible to continue to bump that number up is one question. How long would that affordability be, I guess, institutionalized for? And would they consider a community land trust type of arrangement that would make it affordable in perpetuity through some kind of shared equity arrangement? Could I invite the developer up to answer those three questions, please?
Tom White, as you know, Council Lady, that issue is a very hard issue to define right now. We've got a number of proposals out there, there's litigation right now questioning any number of them. But one thing's for certain, somebody can voluntarily do something. That's what we have here because it's got to be a voluntary matter. We spent a lot of time with Councilman Kendall, and the plan did originally suggest six units. He had said eight to 10. I think we've got to start somewhere where you can't have one particular development cure everything in the area. So what we agreed to do is to say that the applicant specifically requests to voluntarily comply with what's now Council Bill 2016-133 that you're familiar with, for up to 10 units if financial incentives are available. That's the language that's used. We would do that, it would be there in perpetuity. Again, there's a number of moving targets from council bills and litigation about them right now, as you're aware, that are pending in our Chancery and Circuit Courts. This would be as specific as we could be, and it would be there in perpetuity with this language.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Then some other general questions. Are there interior sidewalks on this, or are the sidewalks just on 35th and Trevor?
There are interior sidewalks. They're a little hard to see, but they're around the multifamily building and at the ends of these units. These drives are, there's parking on both sides of them, so they function a bit like alleys interior to the site. So that's, but the sidewalks are along the perimeter and then these interior here.
So does every unit have a sidewalk leading up to its front door?
They do not on this plan.
They do not? So there are some units where you walk through a driveway to get to a sidewalk?
That's correct.
Is that consistent with what we call walkability?
I don't know that we have a definition of walkability, but yeah, they would certainly be, it'd be easier to access if the front doors had sidewalks that went straight to the exterior sidewalks along the public streets.
Okay.
And it's certainly something that we can look at, the commission can make as an amendment.
As a condition?
Yes.
Okay, good to know. That seems important to me. And then secondly, how do, how do street trees get figured? I mean, I don't see that as a condition, and maybe that's covered by something the urban forester would deal with, but what are the requirements for that?
So this plan includes a note that it would meet the standard tree density requirements of the Metro Code. There are no specific street trees shown on the plan right now, although in meeting the tree density requirement, that may be a place where they are incorporated at final, but that could certainly be something you condition for as well.
Okay. I mean, is that something we can also add in the, or just state in the conditions that we know that they will be complying with the tree density since, since we haven't been able to see what that looks like?
We can restate it, but, yes, we can state that they have to comply with the tree density requirements.
That seems important. And that could be, that could be a benefit on that one. Thank you. And then, so the stormwater approval just says yes, which is really concise for what looks like such a steep slope and everything. Is there a plan to include pervious paving here, or how will the stormwater be, because it's clearly going to be a change in how rainwater runs off that site?
Is that addressed to the applicant?
I think so, unless you know the answer.
I do not know the answer to pervious pavement. I could speak, I know stormwater is here, so we could speak a bit to their process if that's helpful.
Okay. Or if the applicant is an engineer here, who may have all the answers.
Can we go ahead and ask that stormwater representative come on up?
Michael Gary, Wooddale and Associates, 516 Heather Place. The stormwater design for this, it's shown in detail in the plans, there are a couple of by-retention areas. We're also anticipating some pervious pavement, pervious paver locations as well. Regardless of that, we will have to show very, very detailed calculations in order to get a permit, so that will be addressed. I also wanted to point out that all the circles shown there, those are, they're conceptual, but those are trees that we are accounting for, for street trees.
Okay, great. So, okay, I just didn't know what I was looking at there, I appreciate that. All right, and I guess now to, to get back to, one more question I should have asked on the affordability, someone may have to come back up. If there were to be affordable housing, what is, I guess, what is the price point for a typical unit and what is, what is the price point for the affordable ones? Or if you, if you want to just speak in terms of 30, 60, 90 of a mile, I can work with that.
We are basically committing to the Metro standards, which is, you know, are defined based upon income levels. Those move, whatever they are, we're willing to comply with. I would tell you what they are right now, but they have changed the number of occasions, whatever they are for workforce housing, affordable housing, we would commit.
Okay, so that's 60 or 80% is what you'd be looking at?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Good, those are helpful questions. One last question, I think this one's to the staff. This is, this is shown as being, quote, "adjacent to a center," and I'm guessing that the center is One City, is that, is that what we're saying it's adjacent to?
So it's a, it's a Tier 1 center area in Nashville Next, this orange. I think it is One City, yeah.
Okay, which can be accessed by walking underneath the interstate, interpass, is that correct? Is there, is there either now or a plan for a way to get across Charlotte anywhere near that area?
I don't know that offhand.
I mean, I guess if you go to 28th, at the 28th Avenue connector, there's a light, there may be one more in front of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure offhand, but we can check.
Okay, I mean, I think if we're, if we're considering this an appropriate area for extra density because it's adjacent to a center, I just want to make sure that you can actually get to it from where you are. And you can, but it, it may not be easy at this point with the current infrastructure, so that, that seems like perhaps another light might be needed just to make it so that people can actually access that. So that being said, I guess the one thing about being first is I can say I'm going to listen to my fellow commissioners and see what they think. I appreciate the reduction from 141 down, I appreciate the change from seven stories down to four. Those were clearly concerns that we heard the first place, so I think we're making progress in the right direction. I'm a little nervous about the appeal of affordability when it seems to be very tenuous. If that's, if that's where all the support is coming from, I would like for that to be more definite. So that being said, I'm going to listen to the rest of my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Stens.
I have struggled with this all week long, including calling the staff to ask questions about this, because I think that the developer has done a beautiful job of trying to come back and listen to the neighborhood, try to do what is the right thing to do here, has reduced the numbers, built lots of infrastructure that's not even the developer's responsibility. And I think there's just a lot of concessions here. When you challenge us to put on our planning hat, though, that's twofold. I think there is a regulatory first and foremost, but secondly, as an advocate for the neighborhoods and for our community as a large, and that's more of a visionary role. And what happens to me in this situation is I am so grateful for every single person that came and talked for two minutes, that you would sit here for hours to have two minutes of say, I just want you to know we listen to you, and that you humanize the process here. I struggle with this one because I think that it's a good plan. I walked every square inch of you guys. I went Sunday and just walked the hills. I wanted to see why the neighborhood was concerned in all the comments that were written to us. Having said that, I could vote yes in a heartbeat, except that for the president, that this is setting for our community. At what point do so many SPs, there's a rule in public policy that says there comes a time when the exceptions become the rules. And SPs are in many ways the exceptions to rules. So I'm struggling about how to vote for that. So I'm going to keep listening, but that's where I am right now.
That's hard to follow up. Is someone from Public Works or Traffic and Parking here? Mr. Doyle. I think, before he gets up here, I think this is the better plan, the reduced height, the reduced units. I think this is where Nashville Next calls for density along the Charlotte corridor with the bus transit availabilities. My question for you, Devin, is with this many units coming down 35th, did we consider requiring the developer to install a traffic light because of the number of cars trying to make that left turn movement? And is that something we could ask for?
Of course, it's the discretion of the commission to ask or not ask. We look at those numbers at a high level, and it's our opinion that they would not meet the standard warrants that we typically use to necessitate the need. Delay itself does not necessitate need because on large, major corridors, you always expect side-street delay where you have unsignalized approaches. And so that's, that's very, very typical. So there's a rigid set of guidelines that have been established by the Federal Highway Administration, and in our review of the volume numbers that are existing today and expected to be generated with this development, it's our opinion that it would not meet the warrants for signalization.
Right. As part of that, and I don't necessarily disagree with your comments, would we want them to make, as they're widening 35th at Charlotte, make plans for when the warrants do exist, that it's easy to install a signal pole there now?
You know, I believe the GIS indicates that we have about 50 feet of right-of-way, so I don't think that there, unless there are utility restrictions or something of that nature, I don't, I don't believe that there's anything out there today that would prohibit the installation of a traffic signal. And to speak to, I think, a question that Council Lady Allen asked earlier, One City, there's actually a traffic signal at the intersection of what I would call 31st at the western end, so you don't have to go all the way to the, to the 28th Avenue connector before you reach a signalized crosswalk that feeds into the mixed-use development of One City. There's actually one much closer to the interstate crossing.
Hey, I don't know if this is for Devin or for Sean, did we consider asking the developer to make a connection from 33rd into the project to have another means of ingress egress into the project?
So there actually was one on the previous version of the plan, and it was removed. I don't know if the applicant would want to speak to some of the history of that. I think staff was looking at the, the network as, rather than each street being complete, having the streets parallel to each other serve all users kind of as a, as a network. And so 35th being an opportunity for vehicles to travel safely to Charlotte, and 33rd being an environment that would be more comfortable for pedestrians.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Well, I, I certainly agree. I appreciate all the comments, both for and against. I think that everybody has good points to make on this. Personally, I think they've done a very good job of designing and dealing with an area that's a very tough site. It is extremely difficult. It is extremely difficult. And it's a, you know, it's, it's quite a challenge. I like the fact that they are taking more of a comprehensive approach versus just one lot at a time, which has been going on in this area. So, basically, I support it with a lot of Council Lady Allen, Allen's comments. So, that's where I am.
I also have to say I appreciate the developer and the owner's willingness to work with the planning department and the community. All the comments were great, and it shows how the community came together. I think, right now, I'm also concerned about the amount of affordable housing. I have to say, I personally don't think that's enough, but I, I know it's not required, and, you know, we're, we have to start somewhere, too. So, it's putting us in a tough position right now, but I have some questions about some of the design. Sean, can you show me where you have the slide with the different types of units, please?
This one?
Yes. So, the red being duplexes, some of the internal duplexes have four shared wall, like walls with other units. So, would that still be considered a duplex? Like, like units 28, 31, 27, 32?
I'll try to answer that. Technically, I think this would be, I think we said called those duplexes because there's two units together on some of those, but technically, I think the whole thing is considered multifamily. But the way it's divided up with two, some of those along Trevor Street being two units together, those appear like duplexes.
And the applicant had actually labeled those center ones on the plan overlapping duplexes, I think to acknowledge the stack against the slope. So, the arrangement is not quite as parallel as it appears on the flat plan.
And also, so my point with that question is, where do people access those units? Is there a front door, or is there only access through the garage? And I guess my concern is, with that space in the middle and with the single-family homes to the right, the, there doesn't seem to be a lot of open space given to those areas to really have a centralized open space or more green space, which I think is, I've heard some of the concerns, you know, really big concern is, you know, we're, we're taking some of that buffer area, or, you know, I think that would help with alleviate some of the density maybe, or just introduce a little bit more open space. So, I guess maybe, I don't know if we could get some details for, I don't know if we're there yet, but see how the dimensions are between those units, those buildings, and then see if that could be widened?
So, I think I, I heard two questions. One is how the, the duplexes in the center are accessed, and, and then also, you know, could there be additional open space incorporated? I would say at the preliminary phase, the architectural details that we have are somewhat limited, and so perhaps the applicant could describe a little better the design of those units than I could. We have the rendering along Trevor Street, but that's not the ones in the center. And so, I may defer to them if you, if the commission is open to that on that issue.
Yes, yeah, they can address that if they want, yeah.
Thank you all. Michael Garry, Wooddale and Associates. So, the exterior units fronting onto 35th and Trevor, all of those have front doors with rear load, traditional rear load garage. The interior units, they're a little bit unique, and that's, I guess you could call them quadplexes, whatever you want to call them. The building code will define them as single-family, that's how they'll be financed through the bank, because they'll own from ground to roof. The metro zoning code would call them multifamily, so whatever, quadplex feels good enough to me. The access for those will come in through, it's, it's kind of a garage slash open carport kind of design that, that I believe we're looking at right now with, you know, some, some like cedar beams coming along across the top. It's not a lean-to or anything of that nature, but it, it presents kind of like a front door, better than a garage door would. Now, as far as, the other question had to do with the, the open spaces, is that correct? And run that one by me again, I'm sorry. I was going through so many things here, I lost track of it.
No, yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit worried about the density of having so many of those, I guess, multifamily structures so close to each other without open space.
And I think part of the intent and the answer to that question is the joint amenity area of, on the multifamily building, the pool, they're going to have outdoor amenities, things like that will be all within the community. And also, I think you had a question about the concern of the tree removal and the buffering from the interstate. If you look at C 2.0 of the SP plans, there's just a handful of mature trees on the property. The heavy tree line is on T dot right of way. So, obviously, those will not be touched.
And T dot, can you remind me where T dot property is?
It is, well, it starts just on the north side of Delaware Avenue, and then it wraps around to the, it's pretty much the top side and the right-hand side of the property. All that through there, yes. And there are a handful of mature trees, but probably maybe 20.
Thank you for that clarification. I have to say that, you know, I do appreciate the, the effort to, you know, like I said, I appreciate the effort to work with the community and making this more, you know, work with the policy. I think that's really important. And the affordable housing piece, I think, is something much larger that we're trying to tackle. I wish we could solve that issue right now, but unfortunately, I don't think we can. But, you know, this is, in, in Nashville Next policy and the plans, this was elected as a transitional area, and it's close to Tier 1 center. And this is the density we're going to be seeing in those kind of areas. So, I think with that, I'm going to support this. It's not an easy decision because of the affordable piece, but I think looking at the policy and the zoning code and the work, the analysis that the planning department has presented to me, I can comfortably support this project.
So, we've heard from all of the commissioners. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Director, can I ask a question? Given the sensitivity of the affordable housing, if we wanted to make a adjustment to staff's recommendation to include a certain percentage of affordable housing units, is that something that's allowable?
Well, at this stage, as developer pointed out, it's voluntary, that it's not mandatory right now. I would say that you definitely, for, for that to really work, really need to engage the developer because they have, they have lenders, they have to be able to make sure the performer works. If they change the number of units that they're seeing that return on, I suspect that they need to be consulted. So, I would hesitate to just change the number here when we've had lengthy conversations over it. But you, you certainly can, you have the latitude to do that.
So, does that mean we're allowed to ask the developer if they would be willing to voluntarily agree to a certain number?
Absolutely.
Ms. White, I think we've heard from enough people, I think Council Lady Allen points out that perhaps eight to 10 units is not enough. So, if we were to say, would your client volunteer 10% of the units?
If we clarify that's 12 units, yes, we would do that. Again, it's got to be voluntary, as, as Mr. Sloan indicated, or it's something that really can't be done at this level. We're voluntarily doing the 12. That'll carry the day. We had proposed six. After extensive community meetings, we heard eight to 10 by the councilman. If it took 12 to gain the approval today, we would voluntarily do that.
Are these units for sale, or the condos? And so, the affordable units will be sold, and that at an affordable price? Is that the way it's going to work?
So, do we have a motion, a conditioned question?
Just a question. Regardless of the number, and I'm so grateful that we're, because it's all voluntary at this point, but we are starting to raise the hope of a lot of Nashvilleans. And how do we begin to make sure that those 12, four to 12, remember we decided on, really are there? What's, what's the regulatory tool that we use to ensure that they stay affordable?
I think that's the importance of the language complying with BL 2016-133. That is the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that was passed by council. That is effective at this moment, though it includes an exception for applications that were made before the effective date. And so, while it was effective last week, we will see a gap in its application until later in the fall. And so, for applicants that were choosing to comply with the ordinance, we have included that language. The way that will work is the involvement of the Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Empowerment, who will be working with the developers on the grants and subsidies for, for sale units, as well as the kind of contractual obligations that they'll be required to comply with.
Any additional questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, so, saying that we approve this, will they have to go through that contractual agreement, just like anybody else would?
Yes, the Mayor's Office would work on that with them.
So, my memory is that when we ended with the final rounds of, of that bill, we were uncertain as to how to deal with the for-sale piece of that. So, do we know what that would look like? If, if all these units are for sale, and I guess, I guess that's what I've heard, is that this is, this is not rental, this is all for sale. Is that correct?
Even when the ordinance is effective to certain projects, there is a process for for-sale units to also request to be affordable or workforce units. And there's a, a certain amount of subsidy, depending on where you're located within county, that's a one-time payment versus the rental payments that are made through the HIP program of the Office of Economic Opportunity and Empowerment.
So, how do we move forward with this developer changing the number to 12 units voluntarily? Can we make that as an amendment? How do we do that to satisfy the rules?
Well, that, this has, has this been the first reading, or this is still here, this hasn't gone?
It, it has not been.
Okay. So, then we'll simply amend the language to reflect what the developers agreed to, so that the legislation, when it's sent to the council, will have that in it.
So, I'd like to move approval of staff's recommendations with all conditions, including the developers volunteering to have 12 units as affordable housing.
That comply with BL 2016-133.
That comply with BL 16-2033.
And I would like to add the internal sidewalks and the statement about the trees, if we could, to the conditions, can we?
Council, let me ask you about that, because I, as I look at the design, I'm trying to, so those, let's say the units there on Delaware Avenue that are internal to the development, that don't actually face any street at all, but face the, the driveways, where would the, where would the sidewalks go in, in this development?
I think that's an excellent question. If we, if we support this because it creates walkable communities, to me, it should be walkable. If they have to make some adjustments, maybe they can do that. This is not the final design, is that correct?
No, this is, this is a concept, yeah. But, that's correct. I'm just not sure, as I, as I look at this, I'm not sure what that sidewalk, sidewalk on a couple of these locations would look like, but if you put it in there, we will certainly make sure that there are sidewalks that connect all of the units to the, the public sidewalk.
Just seems more walkable if we do that. I don't want to create an impossible situation. I will, I will back off on that, but I, I want to make a point. So, can I consider my point made?
Absolutely. We will work with the developer to improve the walkability by adding additional internal sidewalks to connect to the external sidewalks to the degree possible.
Possible, fair enough. Thank you.
And, but your note stating that it has to comply with the tree density standards is also be added to, to the SP.
So, we have a motion and I think two conditions now added on. Do we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion approved.
Yeah. If everybody could be quiet as you exit, please.
All right, so item five is a request for specific planned zoning to permit 208 multifamily residential.
Sean, I apologize for interrupting you. I just want for the record to be clear that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself, but is remaining in the room for the quorum.
Okay, so, this request is for specific planned zoning to permit 208 multifamily residential units and commercial space on property located at 119, 121, 125, and 135 Donaldson Pike. This property is on Donaldson Pike, just south of Lebanon Pike. The Music City Star station for the Music City Star commuter rail is located approximately here where the cursor is pointing, so kind of just northwest of the site. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning of the property is CL for the three parcels closest to Donaldson Pike. CL is intended for retail, consumer service, financial, restaurant, and office uses. And then the back parcel is zoned RS 10, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The policy is a mix of conservation, T3 suburban mixed-use corridor, and T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance. The conservation acknowledges a stream drainage and buffers that run through the center of the property, and the plan respects those with open space, so that won't be impacted by this development. The T3 suburban mixed-use corridor is intended to enhance corridors with a greater mix of high-density residential and mixed-use in areas served with multiple modes of transportation. The T3 neighborhood maintenance is intended to preserve the general character of residential neighborhoods. This, this site is located on a corridor. Access to this development will occur from the corridor, and it's in close proximity to the commuter rail station, as well as existing bus routes on Lebanon Pike, which makes this an appropriate location to transition to some higher intensity residential and mixed uses to support the transit and create a pedestrian-oriented environment in proximity to that transit. This is the site plan, and I'll start by saying that this looks different as of the last couple of days, and I'll walk you through the rationale for that. There are 208 units. There is one mixed-use building of 5,500 square feet along Donaldson frontage here, with all the multifamily units in these two buildings in the back. We were previously evaluating a plan that also included a mixed-use building at this north property frontage. One of the challenges of this site in meeting the goals of that mixed-use corridor policy is that the frontage of this site is broken up by those three intervening parcels, which are not part of this development. are not part of this development. So we had originally been focused very much on enhancing the corridor with those mixed-use buildings. That northern portion of the site is very close to the railroad tracks, immediately adjacent. And so the issue that came up was that if vehicles traveling south on Donaldson wanted to turn left into the site, they could potentially queue up in the center turn lane across the railroad tracks, which would create a safety hazard. In working to address that, the staff from Public Works and Planning worked with the applicant to look at a number of alternatives for trying to address that safety issue, be it a median, be it gating it and having it only be emergency access, or just some parking for the front mixed-use building. There were challenges to all of those alternatives, either because they were going to impact existing access for other property owners around this site, or because they were going to limit the site's ability to meet those corridor policy goals by sort of separating that northern parcel from the rest of the site with a gate. So after evaluating all of that, the developer has agreed to turn that northern piece into more of a park or open space. It would be gated at the street so that there would be an emergency access for fire trucks or other emergency vehicles if it were needed, but it would not serve as an access point for regular vehicular travel, which would eliminate the possibility of vehicles queuing up there. That gate will be visible from the road. We will work through a number of conditions that have been recommended with the applicant on the design of that. Those conditions are intended to ensure that it enhances the pedestrian realm, that it's a nice gateway amenity for this development, and for this transit-oriented portion of Donaldson. So that's a key update for you and kind of the rationale there. There will be sidewalks consistent with the major and collector's street plan along the property frontage on Donaldson. There will be improvements at the intersection of Donaldson Pike and Bluefield Avenue to enhance that as a pedestrian crossing, so that this, you know, residents of this site can cross safely on Donaldson and then make their way up to the commuter rail station, which is on the west side. And there will be a transition in height from the four-story building here to the three stories as you move back into the rear of the site closer to the neighborhood. Staff has also conditioned for some increased landscape buffer yards along the southern and eastern property lines, again, to ensure an appropriate transition. This is a conceptual rendering of the four-story multifamily building. The architecture for the three-story would be similar, but shorter. Again, conceptual at this phase, you'll see conditions that staff has recommended to ensure that the frontage of this four-story building includes articulations and elements that make it appropriate if this were to eventually become more of an entrance feature to this development. Obviously, the three intervening parcels are not available today, but if they were to be redeveloped in the future, we want to make sure that this frontage is addressed as if it were a principal frontage more adjacent to the Donaldson corridor. And so for all those reasons, and with the changes to the north end, again, to balance the goals of the policy and safety for vehicles and for residents of the area, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions for the revised plan.
Thank you. We're now going to listen to the applicant, please. You have 10 minutes, you can save two for rebuttal.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scotty Burnick. I'm a landscape architect with Reagan Smith, and I would like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. I'm here on behalf of BNA Investments, and also in attendance are the architects with Bernard Weinstein and Associates. We really appreciate the exemplary, exemplary involvement with Councilman Syracuse and the planning staff in the time they've invested in this project. Our clients also have went above and beyond to communicate with councilmen from the very start of this project. Councilman Syracuse has attended every meeting with Planning, with Public Works. He's also hosted a neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting. We've received constructive feedback at the neighborhood meeting. We've also received a lot of support at the neighborhood meeting for the development, and it was evident that all parties involved had the same passion for us to provide a successful development. An effort to understand some of these key elements that Planning discussed earlier. Our clients took the appropriate time to defer the project several times, to have those conversations with planning staff, Public Works, and the councilmen. As a result of the adjusted schedule, unfortunately, Councilman couldn't be here tonight due to prior obligations, but he's written a letter of support and should have sent that to each of you. Planning's done an excellent job explaining the project to the preliminary SP, so I'll only highlight a few of the key elements. The site's proximity to the Nashville Star, being less than 1,000 linear feet away, is a transit-oriented development that is very well-needed in this area. The Nashville Star is a gem. In fact, it's a jewel for the community as a whole, and couldn't feel that the density and the development couldn't be more needed in this area of areas of town. It's an excellent opportunity, opportunity to utilize existing infrastructure and transit that's already in place. Although it's directly south of the current downtown Donaldson UDO, the project shares a lot of the goals and objectives of this plan by placing emphasis on walkability and connectivity, while still maintaining a presence on Donaldson Pike. A 5,500-square-foot commercial mixed-use component, as well as a programmed open space discussed earlier, will be along Donaldson Pike and will provide usable elements and services for the residents and the community. The multifamily component, as discussed, speaks to the community plan. The first building, the larger one, is a four-story building. It's specifically designed in a way to provide a variation in the facade, pushing the larger form towards the railroad tracks. As it transitions down, the three-story structure is compliant with the community plan and, and is set up with green space in between for a natural transition. Per our neighborhood meeting, we received some feedback and also from planning staff to provide landscape buffer, which will be done along the southern and the eastern property. In closing, I'd like to say that we're in agreement with all staff conditions of approval. Planning and council support, you know, has been, has been granted, and we would respectfully ask for support from you. I'm available for questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Let's hear from the public now. All of those who are in favor of this, if you'd come forward and sign up. We need your name and address, please.
Floyd Shackto, 2911 in Pike. I am here in support of transit-oriented development in general, and the Donaldson Station project in particular, because it is the first multifamily project, new one in Donaldson, in a long time, probably 20 years, and it is immediately adjacent to the existing train station. It's not within the UDO, but it's just across the railroad tracks from the UDO. The UDO would support this. It's consistent with the policy that is being applied in the Tier One area, which, again, is just across the railroad tracks. Councilman Syracuse and his father and his son are at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame tonight. He asked me to come in his place and speak personally to you about why the community supports this project. I own 10 buildings, 600,000 feet of commercial space in the same zip code. I'm the largest investor in real estate in this community, have been for 25 years. And it's what Donaldson needs to start a renaissance of the community as it converts from a retirement or retirement-age population to a much younger population. East Nashville is moving to Donaldson today. People that want the affordable houses that I sat and listened to for the last hour are coming to Donaldson to buy them, because our housing stock is still, qualifies as workforce housing. These rent structures here will qualify for the 80 to 120 workforce housing as well. I'd happily answer any specifics about it. It's not the prettiest, maybe. There's some issues with the corridor, as you heard, about the site not having all the parcels, but we need to kick it off. We need to get it moving, and this is a great way to do that. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody here in opposition?
There's opposition.
I'm sorry.
If all of you that are in opposition that wish to speak would line up, please.
Oh, I didn't see anybody. Thank you.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm Danny DeGuar. I live at 123 Donaldson Pike. I live on the far backside of that dead-end road. I have nothing against developing this property. I think that the apartments, 208 units, awful intense for this property, not just on the, just not on the traffic. I mean, there's so many different things coming in there, and you're talking to a gentleman who probably walked across that street more than any other human being alive. So when you're going across that street, you gotta worry about four or five different places where cars are coming across. You gotta go across three, you know, and everything else, and the light's too far away. Now, to develop the property for the community, for the good of the community, Mr. Deal got a piece of property, and it's part of the deal Mr. Pluggott's got, is on the backside, that would give it to the Colonial Circle, that'd give it an artery to get out. It would help the community by putting a light at Colonial Circle, and then a light at, sort of, Donaldson Pike, and then one down under the table. So sooner or later, all that property's going to be developed. You got the assistant living place going over there behind the post office, got all that property for sale. I mean, might as well go ahead and put the light there on Donaldson Pike, so you can get it on the, on the Colonial Circle and then come out that way. As far as, as far as the land itself, that's extremely car piece of property. You're looking at, looking at water on three different streams on that property at 20 foot. So every time you go down in there, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna hit the water, and then it's caves. There's a lot of caves in there. It's like the, like the mace on top of the cliff going down through the stone river, down through there. So when you take the water and put all that asphalt on there, all that water's gonna go in that stream. At the present time, no water going, not enough water going in that stream.
Thank you.
So I don't know.
Thank you.
If you figure out how to get past the water--
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is Cynthia McMillan. I live at 2732 Bluefield Avenue, which is right in front of the development there. It's, there's a light. And I think some, first of all, we were thinking that we'd been through, I think, four delays, and so here we are in the middle of the summer, and we have requested, well, we have people out on vacations and planned months ahead, and everyone was geared up, so we only have a handful here. But the people most equipped to come speak with you are out of town, and, but they did send our information via Mr. Owenspeak, that maybe y'all have had a chance to take a look at. So we have definite issues with the traffic flow at that crazy light at Bluefield. And then also, the walkability, you cannot get to the train station from this place safely. And the one thing, putting in pedestrian crosslights, the incredible amount of traffic that comes on Donaldson Pike is backed up, backed up down to Lebanon Road, well past Bluefield. And you put pedestrian lights on that, you're gonna have people backed up all over Donaldson. I appreciate the fact that, first of all, we're excited about having development in Donaldson, but this particular location with 208 units, again, like the prior people had mentioned, you can plan on two cars per. Now, part of the reason is that I know they want to do this, is to promote the star, but you can't get there.
Thank you.
You can't get there, and I don't see much of a improvement at this point.
Thank you for your comments. We very much appreciate that.
My name is James Goodrich. I live at 27, 26 Bluefield Avenue, on the fourth property on the north side from Donaldson Pike. My family has owned that property for 75 years. I am totally against this development in this area. We, our Bluefields has just recently become a historical neighborhood. It is just totally out of character with the existing neighborhood. We come out of Bluefield, it's just tremendous amount of traffic. I would ask any of you to travel to Bluefield, Donaldson Pike in the mornings and in the afternoons. The traffic on Bluefield, getting onto Donaldson Pike, it's a major cut-through from Lebanon Road over on Bluefield to Donaldson Pike, where you bypass the Lebanon Road-Donaldson-Pike intersection. Traffic is bound up from Donaldson Pike all the way to Cumberland Circle, which is the next intersection going to the right on this map up here. Again, it's just totally out of character. We, if you come down Donaldson, or Bluefield Avenue to the Donaldson Pike intersection, you're gonna see four stories. It's not residential. It's a residential area. We bought residential there. Granted, there are developments that need to be made, but the walkability, getting to the Music Star, is just not gonna work. Where's the crosswalk gonna be? It's gonna be at Bluefield. Everybody that is walking will come up to the Bluefield intersection, wait for the light, crossover, go back down. It's just, again, out of character for the neighborhood. I am totally against it as a 75-year-old property owner in the neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone else. We declare the public hearing closed, and we will turn this, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, rebuttal.
Thank you. I'd just like to address a few of those items. Specific to the timeline, we did defer, but that was specifically to work with Planning, Public Works, and the councilmen. I mean, that was a good-hearted move to really try and understand all the details of the project, and that was the reasoning for the deferrals, as you can imagine. You know, we would love to go forward fast, but that wasn't appropriate. In terms of pedestrian connectivity, we're, we will be providing striping and signalization at the Bluefield intersection. That was reviewed and approved and required by Public Works. That was done through our traffic study, looked at, and it's also my understanding that there is a potential for, I'd say, a potential for a future greenway north of our site with a potential crossing that would tie into the Donaldson Station. That's not part of this project, but, you know, hoping that that continues to. And also in terms of, you know, traffic and everything else, we've, the development as a whole meets the level of service policy goals that are required and reviewed by Public Works. I appreciate your time, and let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Now I can close the public hearing. Not seeing anyone else who wishes to speak. We're gonna listen now to our commissioners.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak. This is the first project we've seen in Donaldson in a very long time, and it's really exciting to see, you know, new development in this area, especially with the Music City Star there. This area, I think, is in, you know, really need of more development to really contribute to the people, you know, to the Music City Star. And I know the downtown UDO, Donaldson UDO, has been in place for a while, but this is really gonna start the rest of, you know, the changing of Donaldson. So it's exciting, but I also know that the existing property owners and neighbors are concerned about a few things, and I think one of the comments that really struck out to me was the stormwater issue, and, but this is the preliminary SP, and if there aren't any issues with stormwater, you know, they already approved it. I think that I can trust that, and I'm satisfied with the design. I think that you've done a good job of creating, you know, development where you do focus on the, the open space, and also-- on the open space and also listening to what the planning department had to say about the top corner there with trying to be as safe as possible. And I appreciate that a lot, and creating, adding more open space that could contribute to the whole neighborhood and the community is a great thing as well. So I support this project.
I certainly appreciate everybody's comments. I'm a little bit familiar with the Bluefields intersection of Donaldson Pike, and it is a challenging intersection. So that intersection's gonna stay the same as we, as part of this deal, there's not gonna be any changes to that.
So the changes to it will be for crosswalks and pedestrian signalization, but the existing signal and the configuration of the roadway would not.
And the pedestrian configuration, I mean, that's gonna be in conjunction with the light that's there now?
Correct.
Okay. The, the strain that runs through the middle of the property, what, do we know anything about what's gonna be done there? I mean, they're showing a wide area.
So there are buffers surrounding that stream that cannot be disturbed per requirements of the Metro Code. That, as part of review of the final, stormwater will be looking closely at those kinds of details and how the stormwater will be managed on site for compliance with all of the Metro Stormwater Regulations.
And then along Donaldson Pike, just where the frontage, where the, this owner owns it, is where the sidewalks are gonna be?
The, that's where sidewalks that are consistent with the major and collector's street plan requirements will go. So it's an eight-foot sidewalk and a six-foot planting strip, unless I'm inverting that. And the, there are existing sidewalks along this whole frontage, they just don't have a planting strip. And so acknowledging that there may eventually be some redevelopment of those three intervening parcels, rather than having the applicant put in major and collector's street plan sidewalks that might be torn out, staff has a condition for a fee-in lieu contribution. So it will be improved to major and collector along this developer's property with some acknowledgement for connection in between.
On the whole, I think it's consistent with the plan. I think it's good that we're supporting the mass transit aspect, and I think it's gonna work well with the UDO and Donaldson. So in all, I'm supporting it. I would like to kinda see a rich, I'm not sure it's in our purview, but sort of a rich landscaping approach to this property to kind of pull it off, but I know the railroad track and all the other things that come into play are challenges. That's where I am.
Commissioner, it certainly is in your purview to talk about the landscaping buffers. Is there a particular edge of the property that you have more concern about than others? And we can talk about what landscaping buffers are already required. Sean?
Sure. So the, the plan as it is shows fairly narrow buffers along particularly the southern and eastern property lines, which were the ones that staff was most focused on because that is transitioning to a residential area. And that was, you know, in a manner of accommodating everything on the site, those got pretty narrow. If you have your staff report, you could look at conditions nine and 10 recommended by staff. We've had discussions with the applicant about getting those as wide as possible, so it would be 12 feet along the southern property line and either 10 or 5, depending on how it's landscaped along the eastern, with a requirement that a detailed landscaping plan for those areas be provided with the final, so.
Devin, would you mind coming back up real quick? I certainly appreciate staff's analysis of the northern egress point near the railroad tracks, and that would cause problems. I think that's the proper solution. Devin, satisfy me that with the elimination of that, with potentially 300 cars coming out of these apartments on the one entrance to the south, that that's not gonna create a problem at that one entrance?
I think the findings of the study and the review my, my traffic engineer supports that from an operational perspective, it will operate satisfactory. In actuality, when you look at historical traffic data from a multifamily-type development such as this, you're really looking at numbers, in combination with the commercial development, numbers in the range of about 200 trips during your peak hours, and that's, that's the sum total of entering and exiting. So the expectation is, is that there would be minimal impact to the operation of traffic on Donaldson.
Thank you so much. I agree with Mr. Schechter. This, I think this is really exciting to have a project in Donaldson to support multifamily, especially that close to the, to the star. Sean, to confirm, if somebody wanted to walk out to the, to Leopold, Donaldson Road, they can have a sidewalk to the, to the intersection with Bluefield cross there safely to get to the star?
That's correct. It's, this is not a close.
So there's an existing sidewalk network?
There is an existing sidewalk. So if they were to exit through the north or the south, there would be eight-foot sidewalks with six-foot strips on those frontages, and then there is an existing sidewalk here where the pedestrian crossing would go.
Great. I'm gonna support the project.
I heard the council member speak about this, and I know he is just really excited, and transit-oriented development is something that we've, we've heard a lot of enthusiasm about, and it certainly, you know, if we can get those folks to leave their cars behind, then that's, that's, that fewer, that many fewer cars on the, on the road coming in, which is, which is great. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns about traffic. When I look at the, the traffic study that I see here, it says that with the existing zoning of CL, there could actually be 667 cars going through there to peak hours opposed to the 167 that are, that are expected. So, I mean, it looks like relative to, to what it is zoned for currently in terms of what could happen traffic-wise, this is an improvement over that. And it sounds like that Public Works has made requirements to deal with that in a way that, that will make it have as, an impact that, that can be, can be dealt with. So that being said, and also given Mr. Schechter's statement about the, just the typical price point in the neighborhood already, this, this deals with so many of the things that are important to us that, that I'm gonna support it as well. So I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion stands approved.
We've been at it for two and a half hours. We'll take a short break, and we'll be back. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is item number eight. This is a zone change request to permit up to 267 multifamily residential units and a clubhouse, as well as 15,000 square feet of commercial space. The site is located at 3474 Dickerson Pike, which is next to a Walmart store located on Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Zoning districts on this site include the single-family residential RS 7.5 zoning district and the commercial service CS zoning district. Majority of the site is located in the RS 7.5 zoning district with CS zoning being located primarily along site frontage on Dickerson Pike. Policy for this site include conservation, T3 suburban mixed-use corridor, and T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, with majority of the proposed development being located in the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy area. Conservation policy is intended to preserve and enhance environmentally sensitive land. T3 suburban mixed-use corridor policy is intended to enhance suburban mixed-use corridors by encouraging a greater mix of higher-density residential and mixed-use development along corridors. T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy is intended to create development that is compatible with the general character of suburban neighborhoods that result in higher density and improved pedestrian realm and opportunities for housing choice. This proposed plan includes 267 multifamily residential units within eight structures. Site amenities will include a clubhouse, pool, bike center, playground, some covered parking spaces, and an overlook area. Building H, located along Dickerson Pike frontage, may be all residential, 15,000 square feet of commercial, or a combination of both. This adds flexibility within the specific plan. The plan proposes primary access from Dickerson Pike, with the east and secondary access near the southwestern portion of the site between building E and building D. In addition to the proposed multifamily residential use, this plan proposes commercial uses within 15,000 square feet along Dickerson Pike at the primary site entrance. Uses at this portion of the site, in addition to multifamily residential, will be per the mixed-use general or MUG zoning district with exceptions. The plan also includes sidewalk improvements along Dickerson Pike that will result in the installation of sidewalks consisted with the MCSP being 12 feet in width and a grass strip 8 feet in width. All internal sidewalks will be at least 5 feet in width. Sidewalks involved with the proposed joint access agreement will also be 5 feet in width. Site users will have pedestrian access to abutted commercial services to the south and access to a nearby transit stop located within the Walmart parking lot immediately to the south that provides frequent transit service. Architectural standards for the multifamily use and commercial use are included on the plan, and elevations will be provided at the final site plan phase. This proposed development is consistent with conservation, T3 suburban mixed-use corridor, and T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policies. The development will provide opportunities for additional housing choice, potential for a mix of uses along Dickerson Pike, and improved pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity within the surrounding area while maintaining general suburban character. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. If the applicant is here, you have 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes for rebuttal.
My name is Russ Condes. I'm with Dominion Development and Acquisitions. I'm joined by Scott Morton from Smith G Architecture and Philip Percy from Little John Civil Engineering. I want to thank the commission and the staff and Council Lady Haywood for their involvement thus far. It's been great getting to know you and work with all of you. Council Lady Haywood is hosting a community meeting tonight, so she's not able to attend, but we've been in constant communication about this project. A little bit about our company, Dominion. We were founded in 1972, so we're celebrating our 45th year of, of business. Over the course of that time, we have come to own and operate 26,000 apartment units across the country. I think we're in 23 states right now. And within those 26,000 units, the vast majority are, have some affordable component to them. That's the core business of what, what Dominion does. We've done 600 units in the, of acquisition rehab in the Nashville metro area, so we're familiar with the area and have enjoyed, enjoyed being here. Couple things I just wanted to highlight. One of the, the things that I'm proud of is that the way that Dominion approaches owning, owning apartments is that we are an owner and an operator. On the front end, we commit to being the owner for a minimum of 18 years from when we close. And so that does a few things, and I think most importantly, it incentivizes us to spend the money on the front end to build a quality product. We're gonna be in the neighborhood for, for the foreseeable future, and so we wanna be good neighbors, good, good stewards of the community. When the property needs money, we, we put money into it. When things need to be repaired, we fix them right away. And so I'm really proud of, of what we've done and our management company's ability to, to run the properties. A little bit about this site, you know, we're really excited about it. We think Scott and Smith G have designed a beautiful site that takes advantage of, of some views, has great access to transportation, walking distance from high-frequency public transit. It, got access to jobs, the hospital's right up the street. And I think as, as you guys saw earlier, I was excited to see how many people realize the need for, for affordable housing in Nashville. This property will be, 100% of the units will be affordable workforce housing at the 60% of the area median income level. And so with that, I, again, thank you for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. Scott's very helpful with specific design questions, and we're excited to be here.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this item? Okay. Anyone here in opposition to this item? You have two minutes each, and if you would please state your name and address.
Thank you very much for taking a break and coming back a little bit refreshed because of the hour. I'm Nina Ground. I live at 1116 Dew West Avenue. Unfortunately, we've been a rural area at one time, and now all of a sudden, we've gotten a lot of interest. And the only problem I see, I think the developer is very credible, so I'm not gonna knock that at all, but it's a poor location. Number one, there's gonna have to be blasting, and I did not lose my lawsuit over the Walmart blasting. My house was affected severely. You're on a, what was considered wetland, and it still is, and we have a water runoff problem that's horrendous over there. I am metro water runoff at 1116. There's a proposal, number 15, for 28 units on Dew West, which will devastate that little two-lane. I can't get out of my driveway in the morning and in the evening. I cannot tell you, it's a 35 mile an hour road. How many people have yet to see, unless the cops are sitting there, a 35 mile an hour speed limit in their vehicles. Putting in this many units is gonna make Dew West a high-traffic area, and it can't handle that volume. If you've ever been there at rush hour or after rush hour in the morning or the evening, it's a gridlock all the way to Goodlettsville. I cannot tell you how many emergency responders have been to that Brierley exit right there with the redoing of the highway to put in the Walmart, which, by the way, on the side of Lowe's, there are still blasting socks and chemical in the ground over there. Nobody ever decided to go back and clean up because we don't watch what happens. I love to have something that's affordable for people, but not that's gonna put the danger, put our first responders in a high-stress area to begin with in even more stress because the population growth is just too much for us. If they could break it down to maybe half that size and take it in increments and see how we accommodate it, it may be doable, but at this point right now, it's very unsustainable in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you in advance for your time. My name is Lisa Johnson, 4001 Ridgemont Drive. Not to repeat her comments. This coming October, I will have been a 55-year resident of Belshire Estates, the original Belshire Estates. Council Lady Haywood is holding a meeting as we speak. It started at 6:00 PM. Many of the other residents of Belshire Estates are against this. They are at that meeting. Otherwise... Otherwise, several of them would be here. It backs up, a lot of it backs up to this, or it's very adjacent to this area. It backs up to Mulberry Downs and this area. We have significant flooding issues out that way. When you start taking off the topography, grading in the topography, then you affect the flooding out there, increase that. We have a lot of natural creeks out in our area. We have, our creeks go into the north Ewing Creek, and that feeds into Ewing, which then feeds into Cumberland. So when you start doing this type of development, you're going to create a disaster out there. You've already purchased five homes just in 2010. We don't want to create that. And the density would be a nightmare for our police, fire, and first responders. Please take that into your consideration, please.
If there's no one else in opposition, the applicant, you have 2 minutes to rebuttal.
No, they're not here. They're at the other meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Poor planning. Poor, poor planning.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Scott Morton with Smith G Studio. Just wanted to address a few issues that the neighborhood has. Completely can understand the concern about blasting and flooding in an area like this, especially given such a long-term residency of the 2 people that spoke today. In regards to blasting, a little bit about this site, it was a fill site for when they actually blasted the Walmart and Lowe's supercenter. And so this site is predominantly the leftover fill material when they did a significant amount of blasting that was mentioned earlier for that other development. As such, that's really going to actually be somewhat beneficial for us because it will limit the need, if not eliminate the need completely, for blasting. We don't know at this time, at this preliminary stage, you know, if blasting will be needed, but I can assure you it will not be at the scale that was seen previously by the community for the large supercenter just south of us at the Walmart and Lowe's. And regarding the floodplain, if you look on your screen, we have noted the FEMA floodplain up in the northwestern corner. It shows the boundary shaded kind of in a white area. That's the 50-foot required buffer for the blue line stream that needs to be protected. You can see that our development footprint is nowhere within even 100 feet of the buffer itself. We are very sensitive to any flooding issues in this area. In fact, have limited our development footprint to only the high portions of the site. So we really feel like, and we have our engineer here as well, can corroborate that as far as we will not have a negative impact to flooding in the area. Traffic issues obviously are always a concern of the community. We have addressed, many issues came up with the traffic impact report. The improvements that were stated in there, we've fully complied with, and we can go through those as well with you if need be. Thank you.
So with that, we will close the public hearing, and I'll go around to the commissioners. Commissioner Gomery?
I've got some, a couple of questions from staff. The conservation area that's across the top, I mean, that's due to those streams, and is it 2 streams or 1 stream?
It's 1. Oh, it's 1 stream, but as you can see, it kind of breaks off into 2 separate ones, but it's primarily 1 stream in the northwestern portion of this site. And as the applicant stated, that is the required 50-foot buffer area for that portion of the site is required, and they're not disturbing that area. The portion of the site that most of the development is occurring on is at the top flat portion, and because this site does have significant grade change, that's the portion of the site that's most developable.
What is that light green? I can't read what the text says on that.
The conservation area?
Now, this light green...
Oh, pond.
It's a pond, which says, okay.
Yeah.
And then this entry from the south goes through an existing PUD that's built out, or is that a future?
Yes, the applicant, well, the applicant is currently working with the abutting property owners to the south of that PUD to develop an access agreement to provide secondary access to the site, which is one of the conditions of approval.
On the whole, I think it's consistent, and looks like it's going in the right direction. So I'd like to hear what the other commissioners say.
Again, Gene, I know you said that some of the conservation areas regarding those 2 streams as they converge there, but is some of it also topography? Is it?
Correct.
Steve Slus, okay.
That's correct.
Commissioner Diaz?
I know this project has been going on for a long time, and I hear the concerns about the stormwater, and I appreciate people, you know, coming out to speak in regards to that. So I know this is just a preliminary design, but could the designer maybe speak to, maybe talking about where their stormwater would go, you know, maybe to help alleviate some of those concerns?
I'm Philip Percy with Little John Engineering. And predominantly, the site drains now to the stream areas that have the buffer on them. And so our plan would have multiple bio-retention areas and rain gardens such as that as required by the metro ordinance now. And the main areas is, you know, looking at a pond area, but to the right, as I look at this plan, of C and a large detention area above building A, but there'll be bio-retention areas scattered throughout the facility to pick up the downspouts from the buildings and all that.
So the stormwater won't be going towards the streams, right?
The stormwater goes toward the streams now, and so that's where we'd be matching that same pattern.
Oh, okay, okay, I see. Thank you for that. I think it meets the policy, it meets the request for the whole city for affordable housing, and I think having it so close to the, a pike that, you know, will hopefully get improvements for transit later, I think this matches everything that we requested for natural next, so I approve it, I support it.
Commissioner Haynes?
I know this area well. I was born 5 minutes from here. And what excites me the most is we've had 3 projects today in 3 very different areas of our city, none of which are in Antioch. I think that's exciting that we're seeing development spread to all parts of the city. I think this is a good use of the land. It meets the policy. It's along a transit corridor, so I'm going to support it as well.
I have one question about this land use restrictive covenant, and not sure what it is or how you keep it enforced.
I believe the land use restrictive covenant is a way to ensure affordability for the units, but I believe the applicant can speak more so to that if you, so.
So we'll, as part of this financing, we'll enter an agreement called the land use restrictive covenant, and it's a document issued by Tennessee Housing, and it gets recorded against the land, and it transfers with the land. So like I mentioned before, we plan to be the owners for a very long time, but even if we're not, that affordability restriction will transfer with the land.
I really like this project, and I support it.
Thank you. There was a question at the end about land being dedicated for schools, and I know there's a complicated way that that whole conversation happens, so it may not be fair to ask how that works, but how is that working on this particular project?
Given the, according to our analysis, this development would generate a certain number of students that crosses a threshold, which would require a site dedication for a school. The applicant will have to work with Metro Public Schools in determining that Metro Public Schools does have the right to refuse, does have the right to turn down that requirement, but that's something that we do include as part of our analysis.
Gotcha. And then what happens?
As far as the process regarding site dedication?
Yes, and do they have to just identify something and say, here's 4 acres, do you want it or not?
They would have to negotiate with the Metro Public Schools, to my understanding, as to how that process will proceed. That's something between the applicant and Metro Public Schools.
Gotcha. But y'all make sure that that process happens.
Yeah, Council Lady, what we do is we communicate with schools and let them know when we have a development that has crossed that threshold of 100 new students, I believe is that correct?
Yes.
And then once it's crossed that threshold, then we notify the schools, and then we make sure that the developer and the schools have come to some agreement, whether that's property on-site or in the area, or maybe there's some other type of agreement where they're addressing the increase in school density, or numbers that they're going to see. And then they report back to us what the right solution was for that particular district, school district.
Great. And then does that land on some document somewhere so that later?
Well, sometimes it actually enters into the, if it's an SP, sometimes it'll enter it right into the SP, but then if not, then it can be an agreement between the school board and then development.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that's a good thing to be able to do. And then, I'm going to repeat a question I asked earlier. I see a number of sidewalks leading from the front doors, which I appreciate. Is there a sidewalk that leads to Dickerson Road? I mean, if this is walkable to neighborhood businesses?
Well, and let me highlight something that I don't know that we maybe covered in its detail, and that is how the MTA operates in this area. And you want to go over that, Gene, just a little bit and talk about how MTA addresses this development in particular?
Yeah, sure. So MTA has, let's see if I can zoom out a little bit further. So we have Lowe's, we have Walmart. The MTA transit stop is about right here, and they have high-frequency service at this particular location. There are actually multiple routes that converge at this point along Dickerson Pike as well as in this development. Obviously, Dickerson Pike is slated for high-capacity transit as well as, excuse me, the existing service that exists. There are sidewalks, something that currently do exist along Dickerson Pike that allows users access to the site from Dickerson Pike, as well as when the development goes in, that they'll have access from the development through access easement agreement, which will show improvements of sidewalks that will connect to that transit site.
Great, I think that's good. So within the site, again, is there a sidewalk that leads from the driveway next to B to Dickerson Pike? Or are they walking in the driveway? Is my question.
You're referring to the, this portion of the site?
So that one's good, too, but then also, when you go, yeah, on the main entry, I would, I mean, if we're going to ask them to build sidewalks along Dickerson Pike, are we also going to make an internal sidewalk so that they can walk to that sidewalk without walking in their driveway?
So let me take a stab at this one, because I agree with you, circulation interior and exterior to the site is a priority for us. And there are sidewalks in and around the site. When we looked at between C and H, there is a grade change there, and when we asked about a sidewalk connection at that point, I think that's something of interest to the developer, but it wouldn't meet ADA standards. So we consulted with Public Works, asked them to give us some advice on the technical piece of that, and I think you'd be looking at a lot of switchbacks and other things to make that possible. And so in this instance, unfortunately, no, between C and H, there isn't that connection. However, we felt comfortable recommending approval because, as Gene noted before, we think the primary point where a lot of these folks are going to go is to the south, to the Walmart, to the bus stop, and there is going to be access pedestrian improvements there. And then if you look at the Public Works, the traffic and parking recommendations on page 58, you'll see some conditions there that will make sure that some of the pedestrian circulation is improved as you're going to the south towards the bus stop.
Okay.
So we, not totally ideal, but I appreciate, I mean, something we wanted.
Gotcha.
But we felt like, on the whole, they had met that standard.
Okay, very good. Good, well, I'm glad that's been looked at. I would say the same thing. I mean, I think it's always tough when green space becomes developed, and I understand the neighbor's concern with increase in traffic. It looks like Public Works has given some good direction for both the sidewalk connections as well as some improvements on the road. So I, and it's consistent with policy, so I will support it.
I move approval of staff's recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? All right, motion passes.
Good evening. Item number 20 is a zone change request for 4901 Lindbar Drive. The request is to change zoning from OR 20 to CS. The property is highlighted in red. This is located at the southwest corner of Harding Place and Lindbar Drive. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Current zoning is OR 20. The policy is T3 suburban community center. This policy is intended to enhance and create suburban community centers. These are generally located at prominent intersections and contain mixtures of uses such as commercial, institutional, and it may also contain transitional residential land uses and mixed-use buildings, or serving as a transition to adjoining community character The property is highlighted in red. Again, just this is to show you the surrounding zoning. We have 1 and 2, single-family residential and 2-family residential to the north, to the west, and to the south, multifamily residential to the southeast, and commercial service or CS across Lindbar Drive to the east. The T3 community center policy states that buildings at the edge of the policy form transitions in scale and massing where it adjoins lower-intensity policy areas. So the property we're talking about here tonight is this property here. It is at the edge of the T3 suburban community center policy. The policy surrounding it, this lighter yellow, now that's a T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy, and a neighborhood-evolving policy is directly to the southeast. Those policies, as a reminder, are residential policies only. Rezoning to CS would allow for more intense uses at this edge of the T3 suburban community center policy, which is adjacent to 1 and 2-family residential uses. So again, the property is highlighted in red. I have also highlighted 2 parcels in a blue-green color here. The parcels west of the property requesting the rezoning are currently utilized as parking for the existing office. If rezoned to CS, the property would likely continue to utilize the existing parking areas, which are located within a residential zoning district and that T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. Commercial parking is inconsistent with both the existing zoning and the policy. And by intensifying the zoning to CS, which is proposed, it may require additional use of the parking areas, which is inappropriate. This lot is located at the edge of the T3 suburban community center policy, abutting T3 neighborhood maintenance policy, which consists of single-family and 2-family residential units. CS zoning is, excuse me, is not appropriate given this location and surrounding land uses, therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing. The applicant's here, you have 10 minutes, and you can save 2 minutes for rebuttal if you would like.
Thank you. My name is Mike Rowan. I'm with the law firm of Rowan and Gaines. I represent American Global Property. These are 3 gentlemen that are sitting over here. What I'd like to point out is, is that if you look at that piece of property, if you look at the, I'm assuming that you guys have it on your computer, if you look at the piece of property where the building is, there's only 1 entrance that comes in, and that entrance comes in on Lindbar Drive at 4901 Lindbar. And there's only 1 entrance in, and there's only 1 entrance out. All the other property that's across the street in that entire neighborhood is all commercial property, which is CS property. The residential property, there's another road that comes down, which is where those residential properties are, and that road that comes down there is called Largo Drive. Largo Drive continues, or would have continued, across the street down where those commercial properties are. But what they did when they zoned it is... But what they did when they zoned it is they cut it off, or either, maybe as years went down the road, they tore up that part of the street, I'm not 100% for sure, and they ended it right there at the corner. From those residential houses to that piece of, to where that, our piece of property is, to where that, the building is, there's no, there is no access to even get to that building. It's kind of, you know, off to itself. And in the zoning and being OR 20 is limiting the use of that building and what that building could actually be used for. I mean, these, you know, my clients here, they're legal immigrants that are here, they're in America, you know, chasing their dream, is what they're doing. And for them to be, you know, to be successful with what it is that they want to do, they need to have this zoning changed. You know, there's an old saying, I believe it was Charles Keaton, that said, you know, "The world hates change, yet it's the only thing that brings about progress." I don't believe, if you all are familiar with this neighborhood, this is Harding Place, where it runs into 24. There's a Motel 6, there used to be a Motel 6 there on the corner, and actually, years ago, the first two murder trials that I did came from that Motel 6 years ago. This entire neighborhood is a commercial neighborhood. Even the backside, if you look at that photograph that's even up there, that supposedly residential house has dump trucks in the backyard. So, what I'm submitting to this board is that, you know, this is consistent with the neighborhood, CS is consistent with the neighborhood, and I understand, you know, the policy, you know, that the staff had recommended based on a particular policy and procedure. But we have the support of Jason Potts, which is the Metro Councilman in that particular area. He supports this. I don't believe there's going to be any opposition to it, simply because it is, you know, it's a commercial building, for the most part, although they're not utilizing it as a commercial building. It's just a building that's just basically sitting there, that at one time, I believe, was a chiropractor's office. And so, we, you know, I would, you know, I would advocate for my clients that you, you know, would be so kind as to change this, you know, our zone to CS, is what we're, you know, we're asking you all to do. And I think it's consistent with the neighborhood, and according to the Metro Council, he doesn't have any opposition to it. We have an email from him that states that, because in his opinion, it's consistent with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the item? Anyone in opposition? All right, so we will close the public hearing, and we will start hearing from Commissioners. Commissioner Haynes?
I struggle with this one. I know this area well. We used to own property in this area. I certainly understand the counselor's approach to this. Staff, is there any other approach that we can take to help in this case?
I think the way we looked at it, we felt the current zoning is a good fit in terms of a transition, setting aside the parking there. But we are very sensitive when you have a residential area on two different sides of the property. And what we try to do is not say, "No intensity." We don't say that. We say, "We just want to see a transition to the higher intensity uses that are to the east," and we think the existing zoning works in that way. So, that's how we looked at it.
Okay. All right, I'll listen to my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Sims?
Has there been a community meeting with any of the residents there?
Ma'am?
Has there been any community meeting with the residents?
Actually, they not only ran to, you know, they did the requirements that were required...
Do you mind stepping up to the mic, please?
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. They, you know, they followed the requirements that they were supposed to do in regards to, you know, send it out bailers to everybody in the community. And I also know that, although it wasn't a requirement, they had actually ran in the classified section of the newspaper. And I don't know how many people read the, you know, the paper today that go to the internet for their paper. But, you know, there doesn't seem to be, you know, anyone from the community that's standing up, you know, in opposition of their position. You know, clearly, it's quite some distance away, and it's even separated from the, you know, from that particular residential neighborhood. The buildings across the street, if I may, the buildings across the street, you know, there's, you know, Hooters, you know, a couple of other, you know, kind of restaurant-bar type businesses that are across the street, if you're familiar with the area. And they're just as close to the residential neighborhood across Harding Place as this man's piece of property. Matter of fact, they're even closer. They're even closer. If you were to look at it, if you were to drive, to take a linear line and to run it across Harding Road, the neighborhood in the back is completely, it's completely separated. For what it's worth, the wooded area to where the road cuts off before it continues on Largo Drive cuts off, you know, there have even been some, you know, there's some vagrants that have some puck tents, you know, that are sleeping in that area. You know, if you had somebody that was, you know, minding their business, you know, they may make sure that it was much safer and maybe tell those people that they'd, you know, move down the street, you know, keep it a safer neighborhood. I believe that if you have an active business in the neighborhood, it's going to keep it safer. That's my position on it. I hope I answered your question.
How large, do we have a map that shows how big the residential area actually is here? Yeah, that's it, yeah. Thank you for showing that to me. And all the...
And then that RM 20 is all developed, and there's multifamily, as you go around Lindbar, there's multifamily development all around that corner.
Thank you.
Some distance. I mean, as far as the vagrants, because last time that I was there, as hard as this may be to believe, I mean, I took $20 out of my pocket and gave it to one of the guys that was over there in the tent and said, "Look, you know, you probably need to, you know, clean up and kind of go somewhere else." But, you know, and hopefully, he'll do something positive with that money that I gave him, but who's to say?
I'm just struggling because I do know there is a neighborhood association for this area that nobody showed up for the, I'm just struggling with the lack of communication from the community back to you or to whoever was calling the meeting with the council, so...
Yes, ma'am. I hope you'll pass it. It would help them out.
Counsel Lady Allen?
Thank you. Certainly, we have lots of nice people that come with things they wish they could do that we are not in a position to enable them to do, simply because it's not consistent with policy, which is always a hard thing to have to do with. So, I think we have to look at what the surrounding areas are. Are there other types of zoning that could also provide the transition? I mean, just to sort of know what the other options are.
I mean, there's other office zonings that could serve as a transition. There's OL, ON, OR 20 is what it is today, but there's probably other office-type zonings that could serve as that transition. But the OR 20 also allows for residential, and we felt like that was appropriate on a corridor, that if this could redevelop as residential or office, or stay office, that that was the most appropriate use for this site, given that the requested CS allows for some uses that wouldn't serve as a good transition, such as auto repair and gas station, and liquor stores are allowed, I think, in CS. I think Letitia might have a slide that shows some of the other uses that did concern us that would be permitted under CS.
Right. Would CL or CN also be possible transition zonings?
No, I mean, I think those are still just more commercial in nature. The office is a less intense use that would provide the appropriate transition.
Okay.
If I may, I know you said you were familiar with this, and I think just previously, and maybe even today, but it's still advertised that it was a chiropractor office. I think before that, it was a dentist's office. And those are the kinds of uses that we imagine right adjacent to single-family residence, which this is, are more appropriate, and that's what the policy calls for.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. I don't think I can argue with the staff on this one now. Go along.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, I agree. It's a tough one. This is my neighborhood. But, you know, the policy, especially with this lot being across the street from the CS, this lot does need to serve as a transition, and we have certain zoning districts that are considered transition from CS, and that's what this one is. So, yeah, I have to go with Planning Department and the staff. They did a good job with the analysis. So, I support their disapproval.
I struggle with it. It's an odd piece of property, especially since Largo doesn't connect and how that, how that, and the parking lot being partially on two other parcels, is that right? Am I understanding that correctly? And just leaving it open-ended this way, I tend to go with the staff's recommendation.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we support staff recommendation of disapproval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? Okay, so staff's recommendation of disapproval has passed. So, it looks like we are on the historic item 24. Is that right? Historic zoning commission report?
It's right inside here.
Okay, so we don't have a historic zoning commission report. How about a Board of Parks and Recreation report?
I don't have anything in that report.
Okay. As the lone member of the executive committee, no executive committee report, legislative update. Do we have that?
We passed the budget.
Yeah, that's a great update.
I will throw out, in case anyone's interested, we are having a meeting next Wednesday, joint meeting of the Planning Codes and Historic and Tourism Committees, to talk about BL 608, which was the short-term rental phase-out in residential areas bill, which will be coming back in July. We're meeting next Wednesday to talk about the many various amendments that had been thrown out there that are sort of floating around, trying to kind of come up with a comprehensive way to think those through with enough time before we actually vote on them to process them. So, hopefully, if someone's not on jury duty, we'll have a representative from planning staff there as well. But that's the big news.